Section forty-eight of Annual Reports to the Massachusetts Board of Education by Horace Mann. This LibriVox recording is in the public domain. Twelfth Annual Report, eighteen forty-eight, Part Three, Political Education. The necessity of general intelligence, that is of education, for I use the terms as substantially synonymous, because general intelligence can never exist without general education, and general education will be sure to produce general intelligence. The necessity of general intelligence under a republican form of government, like most other very important truths, has become a very trite one. It is so trite indeed as to have lost much of its force by its familiarity. Almost all the champions of education seize upon this argument first of all, because it is so simple as to be understood by the ignorant, and so strong as to convince the skeptical. Nothing would be easier than to follow in the train of so many writers, and to demonstrate by logic, by history, and by the nature of the case, that a republican form of government, without intelligence in the people, must be on a vast scale what a madhouse without superintendent or keepers would be on a small one, the despotism of a few succeeded by universal anarchy, and anarchy by despotism, with no change but from bad to worse. Want of space and time alike forbid me to attempt any full development of the merits of this theme; but yet, in this closing one of a series of reports, partaking somewhat of the nature of a summary of former arguments, and omission of this topic would suggest to the comprehensive mind the idea of incompleteness, that the affairs of a great nation or state are exceedingly complicated and momentous, no one will dispute; nor will it be questioned that the degree of intelligence that superintends should be proportioned to the magnitude of the interests superintended. He who scoops out a wooden dish needs less skill than the maker of a steam engine or a telescope; the dealer in small wares requires less knowledge than the merchant who exports and imports to and from all quarters of the globe; an ambassador cannot execute his functions with the stock of attainments or talents sufficient for a parish clerk. Indeed, it is clear that the want of adequate intelligence, of intelligence commensurate with the nature of the duties to be performed, will bring ruin or disaster upon any department. A merchant loses his intelligence and he becomes a bankrupt; a lawyer loses his intelligence and he forfeits all the interests of his clients; intelligence abandons a physician and his patients die with more than the pains of natural dissolution. Should judges upon the bench be bereft of this guide, what havoc would be made of the property and the innocence of men? Let this counselor be taken from executive officers, and the penalties due to the wicked would be visited upon the righteous, while the rewards and immunities of the righteous would be bestowed upon the guilty. And so should intelligence desert the halls of legislation, weakness, rashness, contradiction, and error would glare out from every page of the statute book. Now, as a republican government represents almost all interests, whether social, civil, or military, the necessity of a degree of intelligence adequate to the due administration of them all is so self-evident that a bare statement is the best argument. But in the possession of this attribute of intelligence, elective legislators will never far surpass their electors. By a natural law, like that which regulates the equilibrium of fluids, elector and elected, appointer and appointee, tend to the same level. It is not more certain that a wise and enlightened constituency will refuse to invest a reckless and profligate man with office, or will discard him if accidentally chosen, than it is that a foolish or immoral constituency will discard or eject a wise man. This law of assimilation between the choosers and the chosen results not only from the fact that the voter originally selects his representative according to the affinities of good or of ill, of wisdom or of folly, which exist between them, but if the legislator enacts or favors a law which is too wise for the constituent to understand, or too just for him to approve, the next election will set him aside, as certainly as if he had made open merchandise of the dearest interests of the people by perjury or for a bribe. And if the infinitely just and good, in giving laws to the Jews, recognized the hardness of their hearts, how much more will an earthly ruler recognize the baseness or wickedness of the people when his heart is as hard as theirs? In a republican government, legislators are a mirror reflecting the moral countenance of their constituents; and hence it is that the establishment of a republican government, without well-appointed and efficient means for the universal education of the people, is the most rash and foolhardy experiment ever tried by man. Its fatal results may not be immediately developed; they may not follow as the thunder follows the lightning; for time is an element in maturing them, and the calamity is too great to be prepared in a day. But like the slow accumulating avalanche, they will grow more terrific by delay; and at length, though it may be at a late hour, will overwhelm with ruin whatever lies athwart their path. It may be an easy thing to make a republic, but it is a very laborious thing to make republicans; and woe to the republic that rests upon no better foundations than ignorance, selfishness, and passion. Such a republic may grow in numbers and in wealth, as an avaricious man adds acres to his lands, so its rapacious government may increase its own darkness by annexing provinces and states to its ignorant domain. Its armies may be invincible, and its fleets may strike terror into nations on the opposite sides of the globe at the same hour. Vast in its extent, and enriched with all the prodigality of nature, it may possess every capacity and opportunity of being great and of doing good; but if such a republic be devoid of intelligence, it will only the more closely resemble an obscene giant who has waxed strong in his youth and grown wanton in his strength, whose brain has been developed only in the region of the appetites and passions, and not in the organs of reason and conscience, and who therefore is boastful of his bulk alone, and glories in the weight of his heel and in the destruction of his arm. Such a republic, with all its noble capacities for beneficence, will rush with the speed of a whirlwind to an ignominious end; and all good men of after times would be fain to weep over its downfall, did not their scorn and contempt at its folly and wickedness repress all sorrow for its fate. As the merits of this subject cannot even be sketched on the present occasion, I will confine myself to a single illustration, showing how an unenlightened people will permit, and sometimes even require, that their government should injure their own interests. A universal function of government, one that has pertained to every government that has ever existed, and doubtless will continue to do so while the world stands, is the collection of revenues. The government must be maintained, but it has no power of earning or of creating wealth to defray its own expenses. It must therefore be supported by revenues derived from the people. In absolute despotisms, arbitrary exactions are made upon all the possessors of wealth, or upon all but a few accepted favorites. Where a pretense for such exactions is wanted, acts which are not crimes are declared to be criminal so that the ruler may claim a forfeiture or penalty for the performance of deeds which, before any tribunal of conscience or of justice, would be held innocent. Ex post facto laws are made, that is laws which act backwards and subject an act to punishment after the law, which was not punishable at the time it was done, which might have been indeed not only guiltless but laudable at the time of its performance. Now, it must be obvious that such methods of raising revenue must have an almost annihilating effect upon the production of wealth; for no man will earn money beyond his immediate necessities when the very fact of his acquisition only exposes him to pillage. When the richest men are the worst plundered, poverty becomes the privilege. Intelligence, though it had been that of the prince of darkness, would have saved nations from this cause of poverty. Governments less arbitrary have resorted to expedients for self-support, scarcely less baneful to the general welfare. Among these are monopolies, such as that, for instance, by which the pasha of Egypt required all the cotton grown by his subjects to be sold to him at his own price, that he might then resell it at an advanced one; or that by which the French king exercised the privilege of selling all the tobacco consumed in his kingdom, and then sold out the privilege to sell at an enormous price. Some governments have derived a revenue from the sale of offices, even those which demand for the fit discharge of their duties, the highest talents, and the purest integrity, such as the judicial; and so have cared everything for the amount of the bribe, and nothing for the fitness of the incumbent. In all such cases, the most vital and enduring interests of the community have been sacrificed to the incidental benefit of revenue, a policy vastly more ruinous than that of the incendiary who burns a house that he may steal a shilling. Even the freest and most enlightened governments have been guilty of similar improvidences and follies. The raising of revenue from licensed lotteries furnishes a signal illustration: for every unit of gain to the public treasury by the levy of a tax on the sale of lottery tickets, hundreds of losses are subtracted from the public wealth; for it is obvious in the first place that lotteries create no wealth; they add nothing to the aggregate of silver and gold belonging to a community, any more than they add to the number of its houses or the extent of its lands. They can do nothing more than transfer one man's money to another man's pocket; then they occupy the time of many individuals who otherwise might be usefully employed in the creation or augmentation of the public wealth. Besides this, the expenses actually incurred by agencies, brokerage, advertisements, apparatus, and so forth is not inconsiderable. It is also true that the poorest class of people are usually the purchasers of lottery tickets, on the same principle that a man must first be drowning before he will catch at a straw, and generally with the same result. Thus all the evils of poverty are aggravated by the loss of a part of its pittance. Then adventuring in this traffic substitutes hopes of gain founded on chance for the certainties of regular industry. The services of a laborer or an apprentice, of a journeyman mechanic or a clerk, with an undrawn lottery ticket in his pocket, are hardly worth half-price; for how can anyone work for a few shillings a day while hope is jingling a bag of gold in his ears to be had for nothing? But while the earnings of the ticket holder are less, his expenditures are greater; for why should not a man who is so soon to be rich anticipate a little the receipt of his fortune? It is on the same principle which leads a profligate heir to bind himself by post obits. It is said that none but a weak-minded man will be so confident of success as to be less industrious or less frugal after the purchase of a ticket than before. The answer is that the fact of the purchase proves the weak-mindedness. A tempter of fortune may limit himself either to one or to any prescribed number of trials, and resolve that, if unsuccessful, he will abide by the decision of his luck and never venture again. But such a man does not reflect that he will come out of this experiment a different man from what he was when he went into it. The state of his mind will be altered more than the state of his purse; and he has no second uncorrupted will whose energies he can now use to restrain the backsliding of the first. But suppose a man to meet with the misfortune of being what he calls fortunate; suppose him to draw a prize of fifty thousand dollars, and thus, without any valid consideration or any moral right, to pick the pockets of five thousand persons of ten dollars each, and this too without the dexterity or sleight of hand of a common pickpocket; yet it is proved by data derived from the widest observation that the chances are fifty to one that while his unjust gains will only injure the losers, they will ruin himself. Take all these evils into consideration, and take into consideration also what is far more important than all these evils united, the impositions and the frauds which accompany the whole operation, and which often bear as great a proportion to the fair dealing as the blanks bear to the prizes; take all these pecuniary, social, and moral mischiefs into account, and how is it possible for any intelligent legislator, for the sake of a little incidental revenue, ever to legalize an institution which destroys wealth by wholesale and cankers the morals of entire classes of the people? And yet, until within a few years, there was not a state in this whole union whose legislature did not stand so low, not only in the scale of morals but of political economy, as to authorize lotteries. Sometimes they were granted for a paltry revenue to be paid into the treasury, sometimes to aid in the erection of public works, to build a bridge, or a canal, or a church. Just in proportion as intelligence has advanced, petitions for lotteries have been refused, and the sale of lottery tickets interdicted by law. Until now, they are driven almost exclusively into the southern and southwestern states. There they await the dawning of that general enlightenment which common schools could so rapidly give, to be banished from the country forever. On the clearest principles of morality and political economy, the licensing of houses for the sale of intoxicating drinks, of gaming houses, and houses of ill fame, for the ignominious purpose of raising revenue out of the misery and licentiousness of men, stands even on a more unsound and criminal footing than legalizing the pest of lotteries. Yet all this is done, even at the present day, by legislators who would think it an indignity if they were denied an exalted place on the role of enlightened, patriotic, and Christian men. Great Britain, for a series of years, has derived more than one-fourth part of all her enormous revenue from the various manufactures of malt and sale of spirituous liquors, though every pound which has gone into the treasury from this source represented some stage in the terrible process by which sanity was turned into madness or a well-man into a sick beast. France, and even some parts of our own country, have exhibited hateful specimens of the other kinds of these incarnations of evil, these devouring monsters who have been permitted, for a fee, by the governments which should have protected their people, to stalk through society and to inflict upon all its interests, body, soul, and estate, direer calamities than death itself. The multiplication of oaths is another signal illustration of the fact how prone incompetent legislators ever are to sacrifice the greater interest to the less, the spiritual to the outward, the enduring to the temporary. Adherence to truth is so necessary among men that even the lowest instincts of self-interest will visit the falsifier with retribution, though honor and conscience should not. But the utterance of truth, very generally speaking, is considered more in the light of an obligation between man and man than as a due to heaven; and there are many who would not hesitate to tell a falsehood, who would tremble at the commission of perjury. But governments, for some collateral and incidental benefit, most generally for the purpose of securing themselves against fraud in the collection of revenues, impose an oath upon men, not merely where the oath-taker is adversely interested, but where, from the nature of the case, he cannot certainly determine the truth of the statement to which he deposes. This leads to moral laxity and relaxes laxity itself. Hence, in mercantile communities, there has arisen a class of oaths called custom-house oaths, an appellation which indicates that men swear, if not to what they know to be untrue, yet at least to what they do not know to be true. Often the oath is administered to persons who are under the strongest temptations to perjury, and where too the danger of detection is small. This is perjury made easy, for the step is a short one between swearing to a thing as true, with only a general inference or supposition that it may be so, and swearing to a known untruth. Now, can any money compensate government for contaminating public morals? Or in a republic, which is a government of the people by the people, can they afford to barter their own integrity in order to get a little of their own money out of their own pockets into their own public treasury, whence it is so soon to flow back into their own pockets again? Every legislator should be a political economist, and every voter should know at least the leading elements of political economy, and be able to understand their application to the affairs of life. But surely that political economy is a delusion and a cheat which does not hold the morals of the community as the primal element in its prosperity; and the prayer, "Lead us not into temptation," is one which may be as appropriately addressed by a people to its rulers as by a frail and fallible mortal to his maker. I have now given a hasty review of a single class of errors, those pertaining to the collection of revenue, into which governments have fallen through a want of intelligence. Through a want of such intelligence, it may be added, as any discreet and reflecting man would exercise in the management of his own affairs. And when will rulers be wiser than they have been? Never, until the people to whom they are responsible shall permit it and demand it. Never will wisdom preside in the halls of legislation, and its profound utterances be recorded on the pages of the statute book, until common schools or some other agency of equal power not yet discovered shall create a more far-seeing intelligence and a purer morality than has ever yet existed among communities of men. Legislators, in the execution of their high guardianship over public interests, will never secure to the state even the greatest amount of wealth while they seek to obtain it at the price of morality. It is only when the virtue of the people is supremely cared for that they will discover the comprehensive meaning of the scripture, that godliness is profitable unto all things. However elevated the moral character of a constituency may be, however well-informed in matters of general science or history, yet they must, if citizens of a republic, understand something of the true nature and functions of the government under which they live. That anyone who is to participate in the government of a country when he becomes a man should receive no instruction respecting the nature and functions of the government he is afterwards to administer is a political sollicism. In all nations, hardly accepting the most rude and barbarous, the future sovereign receives some training which is supposed to fit him for the exercise of the powers and duties of his anticipated station; where, by force of law, the government devolves upon the heir, while yet in a state of legal infancy, some regency or other substitute is appointed to act in his stead until his arrival at a mature age; and in the meantime he is subjected to such a course of study and discipline, as will tend to prepare him, according to the political theory of that time and place, to assume the reins of authority at the appointed age. If in England, or in the most enlightened European monarchies, it would be proof of restored barbarism to permit the future sovereign to grow up without any knowledge of his duties, and who can doubt that it would be such a proof? Then surely it would be not less a proof of restored or of never removed barbarism amongst us, to empower any individual to use the elective franchise without preparing him for so momentous a trust. Hence the Constitution of the United States and of our own state should be made a study in our public schools. The partition of the powers of government into the three coordinate branches, legislative, judicial, and executive, with the duties appropriately devolving upon each; the mode of electing or of appointing all the officers, with the reasons on which it was founded; and especially the duty of every citizen in a government of laws to appeal to the courts for redress in all cases of alleged wrong, instead of undertaking to vindicate his own rights by his own arm; and in a government where the people are the acknowledged sources of power, the duty of changing laws and rulers by an appeal to the ballot, and not by rebellion, should be taught to all the children until they are fully understood. Had the obligations of the future citizen been sedulously inculcated upon all the children of this republic, would the patriot have had to mourn over so many instances where the voter, not being able to accomplish his purpose by voting, has proceeded to accomplish it by violence? Where, agreeing with his fellow citizens to use the machinery of the ballot, he makes a tacit reservation that if that machinery does not move according to his pleasure, he will rest or break it? If the responsibleness and value of the elective franchise were duly appreciated, the day of our state and national elections would be among the most solemn and religious days in the calendar. Men would approach them not only with preparation and solicitude, but with the sobriety and solemnity with which discreet and religious-minded men meet the great crises of life. No man would throw away his vote through caprice or wantonness, any more than he would throw away his estate or sell his family into bondage. No man would cast his vote through malice or revenge, any more than a good surgeon would amputate a limb, or a good navigator sail through perilous straits, under the same criminal passions. But perhaps it will be objected that the Constitution is subject to different readings, or that the policy of different administrations has become the subject of party strife; and therefore, if anything of constitutional or political law is introduced into our schools, there is a danger that teachers will be chosen on account of their affinities to this or that political party; or that teachers will feign affinities which they do not feel, in order that they may be chosen; and so each schoolroom will at length become a miniature political club-room, exploding with political resolves, or flaming out with political addresses, prepared by beardless boys in scarcely legible handwriting and in worse grammar. With the most limited exercise of discretion, all apprehensions of this kind are wholly groundless. There are different readings of the Constitution, it is true; and there are partisan topics which agitate the country from side to side. But the controverted points, compared with those about which there is no dispute, do not bear the proportion of one to a hundred. And what is more, no man is qualified, or can be qualified, to discuss the disputable questions, unless previously and thoroughly versed in those questions about which there is no dispute. And the terms and principles common to all and recognized by all is to be found the only common medium of language and of idea by which the parties can become intelligible to each other; and there too is the only common ground whence the arguments of the disputants can be drawn. It is obvious, on the other hand, that if the tempest of political strife were to be let loose upon our common schools, they would be overwhelmed with sudden ruin. Let it be once understood that the schoolroom is a legitimate theatre for party politics; and with what violence will hostile partisans struggle to gain possession of the stage and to play their parts upon it? Nor will the stage be the only scene of gladiatorial contests; these will rage in all the avenues that lead to it. A preliminary advantage, indispensable to ultimate success, will be the appointment of a teacher of the true faith. As the great majority of the schools in the state are now organized, this can be done only by electing a prudential committee, who will make what he calls political soundness paramount to all other considerations of fitness. Thus, after petty skirmishings among neighbors, the fierce encounter will begin in the district's primary assembly in the schoolroom itself. This contest being over, the election of the superintending or town's committee must be determined in the same way; and this will bring together the combustibles of each district to burn with an intenser and more devouring flame in the town meeting. It is very possible, nay, not at all improbable, that the town may be of one political complexion, while a majority of the districts are of the opposite. Who shall moderate the fury of these conflicting elements when they rage against each other? And who shall save the dearest interests of the children from being consumed in this fierce combustion? If parents find that their children are indoctrinated into what they call political heresies, will they not withdraw them from the school? And if they withdraw them from the school, will they not resist all appropriations to support a school from which they derive no benefit? But could the schools themselves survive these dangers for a single year? It would be only to encounter others still more perilous. Why should not the same infection that poisons all the relations of the schoolroom spread itself abroad and mingle with all questions of external organization and arrangement? Why should not political hostility cause the dismemberment of districts already too small? Or what would work equal injury prevent the union of districts whose power of usefulness would be doubled by a combination of their resources? What better could be expected than that one set of school-books should be expelled and another introduced, as they might be supposed, however remotely, to favor and another introduced, as they might be supposed, however remotely, to favor one party or the other, or as the authors of the books might belong to one party or the other? And who could rely upon the reports, or even the statistics, of a committee chosen by partisan votes, goaded on by partisan impulses, and responsible to partisan domination, and this, too, without any opportunity of control or check from the minority? Nay, if the schools could survive long enough to meet the crisis, why should not any and every measure be taken, either to maintain an existing political ascendancy, or to recover a lost one, in a school district or in a town, which has even been taken by unscrupulous politicians to maintain or to recover an ascendancy at the polls? Into a district or into a town voters may be introduced from abroad to turn the scale; an employer may dismiss the employed for their refusal to submit to his dictation, or make the bread that is given to the poor man's children perform the double office of payment for labour to be performed and of a bribe for a principal to be surrendered. And beyond all this, if the imagination can conceive anything more deplorable than this, what kind of political doctrines would be administered to the children amid the vicissitudes of party domination, their alternations of triumph and defeat? This year, under the ascendancy of one side, the Constitution declares one thing, and commentaries, glosses, and the authority of distinguished names all ratify and confirm its decisions. But victory is a fickle goddess; next year the vanquished triumph, and Constitution, gloss, and authority make that sound doctrine which was pestilent error before, and that false which was true. Right and wrong have changed sides. The children must now join in chorus to denounce what they had been taught to reverence before, and to reverence what they had been taught to denounce. In the meantime, those great principles which, according to Cicero, are the same at Rome and at Athens, the same now and forever, and which, according to Hooker, have their seat in the bosom of God, have become the fittest emblems of chance and of change. Long, however, before this series of calamities would exhaust itself upon our schools, the schools themselves would cease to be. The ploughshare would have turned up their foundations; their history would have been brought to a close, a glorious and ascending history until struck down by the hand of political parasite, then suddenly falling with a double ruin, with death and with ignominy. But to avoid such a catastrophe, shall all teaching relative to the nature of our government be banished from our schools? And shall our children be permitted to grow up in entire ignorance of the political history of their country? In the schools of a republic, shall the children be left without any distinct knowledge of the nature of a republican government? Or only with such knowledge as they may pick up from angry political discussions, or from party newspapers, from caucus speeches, or Fourth of July orations, the apocrypha of apocrypha? Surely between these extremes there must be a medium not difficult to be found? And is not this the middle course, which all sensible and judicious men, all patriots, and all genuine republicans must approve? Namely, that those articles in the creed of republicanism, which are accepted by all, believed in by all, and which form the common basis of our political faith, should be taught to all? But when the teacher, in the course of his lessons or lectures on the fundamental law, arrives at a controversial text, he is either to read it without comment or remark, or at most he is only to say that this passage is the subject of disputation, and that the schoolroom is neither the tribunal to adjudicate nor the forum to discuss it. Such being the rule established by common consent, and such the practice observed with fidelity under it, it will come to be universally understood that political proselytism is no function of the school, but that indoctrination into matters of controversy between hostile political parties is to be elsewhere sought for and elsewhere imparted. Thus may all the children of the commonwealth receive instruction in all the great essentials of political knowledge, in those elementary ideas without which they will never be able to investigate more recondite and debatable questions. Thus will the only practicable method be adopted for discovering new truths, and for discarding, instead of perpetuating, old errors; and thus, too, will that pernicious race of intolerant zealots, whose whole faith may be summed up in two articles, that they themselves are always infallibly right, and that all dissenters are certainly wrong, be extinguished. Extinguished not by violence nor by proscription, but by the more copious inflowing of the light of truth. Moral Education. Moral education is a primal necessity of social existence. The unrestrained passions of men are not only homicidal but suicidal, and a community without a conscience would soon extinguish itself. Even with a natural conscience, how often has evil triumphed over good? From the beginning of time, wrong has followed right, as the shadow the substance. As the relations of men became more complex, and the business of the world more extended, new opportunities and new temptations for wrongdoing have been created. With the endearing relations of parent and child came also the possibility of infanticide and paricide; and the first domestic altar that brothers ever reared was stained with fratricidal blood. Following close upon the obligations to truth came falsehood and perjury; and closer still upon the duty of obedience to the divine law came disobedience. With the existence of private relations between men came fraud; and with the existence of public relations between nations came aggression, war, and slavery. And so, just in proportion as the relations of life became more numerous, and the interests of society more various and manifold, the range of possible and of actual offences has been continually enlarging. As for every new substance there may be a new shadow, so for every new law there may be a new transgression. No form of the precious metals has ever been used which dishonest men have not counterfeited; and no kind of artificial currency has ever been legalized which rogues have not forged. The government sees the evils that come from the use of intoxicating drinks and prohibits their sale, but unprincipled men pander to depraved appetites and gather a harvest of dishonest profits. Instead of licensing lotteries and deriving a revenue from the sale of tickets, the state forbids this mischievous traffic. But while law-abiding men disdain to practise an illicit trade, knavish brokers, by means of the prohibition itself, secure a monopoly of the sales and pocket the infamous gain. The government imposes duties on imported goods. Smugglers evade the law and bring goods into the market clandestinely; or perjurers swear to false invoices and escape the payment of duty, and thus secure to themselves the double advantage of increased sales and enhanced profits upon what is sold. Science prepares a new medicine to heal or alleviate the diseases of men. Crime adulterates it, or prepares as a substitute some cheap poison that resembles it, and can be sold instead of it. A benefactor of the race discovers an agent which has the marvellous power to suspend consciousness and take away the susceptibility to pain. A villain uses it to rob men and pollute women. Houses are built; the incendiary burns them that he may purloin the smallest portion of their goods. The press is invented to spread intelligence, but libelers use it to give wings to slander. And so, throughout the infinitely complex and ramified relations of society, wherever there is a right there may be a wrong, and wherever a law is made to repress the wrong, it may be evaded by artifice or overborne by violence. In fine, all means and laws designed to repress injustice and crime give occasion to new injustice and crime; for every lock that is made, a false key is made to pick it; and for every paradise that is created, there is a Satan who would scale its walls. Nor does this view of the subject exhibit the scope and multitude of the transgressions that may be committed. To represent the range and compass of possible violations, every law that exists must be multiplied by a high power. When the whole family of mankind consisted of but two persons, there could be only two offenders. But now, when the race has increased to millions and hundreds of millions, the laws may be broken by millions and hundreds of millions, an increased number of transgressors of an increased number of laws. The multitude, then, of possible violations of law is terrific to the imagination; even the actual violations are sufficient to make our best civilization look but little better than barbarism. But the above outline, whose vast circumference may be filled up by the commission of crimes against positive law, embraces not a tithe of possible transgressions. Every law in the statute-book might be obeyed, so as to leave no penalty to be awarded by the courts or inflicted by executive officers; and yet myriads of private vices, too subtle and intangible for legislative enactments, and too undefinable to be dealt with by the tribunals of justice, might still imbit her all domestic and social relations, and leave nothing in life worth living for. Were the greater plagues of public crime and open violence to be stayed, still the lesser ones might remain. Like the plagues of Egypt, they might invade every house, penetrate to every chamber, corrupt the water in the fountains and the bread in the kneading troughs, and turn the dust into loathsome life, so that the plague of hail and the plague of darkness might seem to be blessings in comparison. In offences against what are usually called the minor morals, against propriety, against decency, against the domestic relations, and against good neighbourhood, as they are illustrated and enjoined by the example of Christ, the precepts of the gospel, and the perfect law of love, here is a vast region where offences may grow, and where they do grow, thick-standing and rankly luxuriant. Against these social vices in all ages of the world, the admonitions of good men have been directed. The moralist has exposed their deformity in his didactic page; the satirist has chastised them in pungent verse; the dramatist has held them up to ridicule on the mimic stage; and to some extent the Christian minister has exhibited their gross repugnancy to the character of a disciple of Jesus. Still they continue to exist. And to say nothing of heathen nations, the moral condition of all christendom is, in this respect, like the physical condition of one of the nations that compose it, that extraordinary people, I mean, whose dwellings, whose flocks, whose agriculture, whose merchandise, and who themselves are below the level of the ocean, and against them at all times this ocean rages and lifts itself up; and whenever or wherever it can find a breach or make one, it rushes in and overwhelms men and their possessions in one common inundation. Even so, like a weltering flood, do immoralities and crimes break over all moral barriers, destroying and profaning the securities and the sanctities of life. Now how best shall this deluge be repelled? What mighty power or combination of powers can prevent its inrushing, or narrow the sweep of its ravages? The race has existed long enough to try many experiments for the solution of this greatest problem ever submitted to its hands; and the race has experimented without stint of time or circumspection of space to mar or modify legitimate results. Mankind have tried despotisms, monarchies, and republican forms of government; they have tried the extremes of anarchy and of autocracy; they have tried draconian codes of law, and for the lightest offences have extinguished the life of the offender. They have established theological standards, claiming for them the sanction of divine authority and the attributes of a perfect and infallible law; and then they have imprisoned, burnt, massacred, not individuals only, but whole communities at a time, for not bowing down to idols which ecclesiastical authority had set up. These and other great systems of measures have been adopted as barriers against error and guilt; they have been extended over empires, prolonged through centuries, and administered with terrible energy. And yet the great ocean of vice and crime overleaps every embankment, pours down upon our heads, saps the foundations under our feet, and sweeps away the securities of social order, of property, liberty, and life. At length these experiments have been so numerous, and all of them have terminated so disastrously, that a body of men has risen up in later times, powerful in influence and not inconsiderable in numbers, who, if I may use a mercantile phrase, would abandon the world as a total loss, who mock at the idea of its having a benevolent or even an intelligent author or governor, and who therefore would give over the race to the dominion of chance, and to that of their own licentious passions, whose rule would be more fatal than chance. But to all doubters, disbelievers, or despairers in human progress, it may still be said there is one experiment which has never yet been tried. It is an experiment which, even before its inception, offers the highest authority for its ultimate success. Its formula is intelligible to all, and it is as legible as though written in starry letters on an azure sky. It is expressed in these few and simple words: Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old he will not depart from it. This declaration is positive; if the conditions are complied with, it makes no provision for a failure. Though pertaining to morals, yet if the terms of the direction are observed, there is no more reason to doubt the result than there would be in an optical or chemical experiment. But this experiment has never yet been tried; education has never yet been brought to bear with one hundredth part of its potential force upon the natures of children, and threw them upon the character of men and of the race. In all the attempts to reform mankind which have hitherto been made, whether by changing the frame of government, by aggravating or softening the severity of the penal code, or by substituting a government created for a God-created religion, in all these attempts, the infantile and youthful mind, its imminibility to influence, and the enduring and self-operating character of the influences it receives, have been almost wholly unrecognized. Here, then, is a new agency whose powers are but just beginning to be understood, and whose mighty energies hitherto have been but feebly invoked. And yet from our experience, limited and imperfect as it is, we do know that far beyond any other earthly instrumentality, it is comprehensive and decisive. Reformatory efforts hitherto made have been mainly expended upon the oak-fibred hardyhood and incorrigibleness of adult offenders, and not upon the flexibleness and ductility of youthful tendencies. Rulers have forgotten that though a giant's arm cannot bend a tree of a century's growth, yet the finger of an infant could have given direction to its germ. When a man has invested fifty thousand dollars in the business of importing ardent spirits into the country, it often does little more than enrage him to point out the different results between such an investment and the investment of the same sum in whale-ships, where, besides its own permanent value, it will soon add fifty thousand dollars more to the actual wealth of the community. Show the distiller how he changes the life-sustaining fruits of the earth into a physical and moral poison, and what a deluge of destruction he is sending forth over society, and his blood will boil hardly less fiercely than his accursed cauldrons. But who will be rash enough to say of any man now engaged in the business of promoting and spreading intemperance, and visiting another generation with all its calamities? Who will dare to say of any of them that the nature and consequences of this direful occupation might not have been so vividly depicted to the imagination, and so clearly explained to the conscience during the years of childhood, that any child would sooner think of getting a living by counterfeiting money than by engaging in this traffic? Would any child, on whose heart the horrors and atrocities of the slave-trade had made their natural impression, before his arrival at the age of fourteen years, ever connect himself with slavery afterwards? Were a child taught the dignity, the healthfulness, and the advantages of voluntary labour, and the meanness of living upon the unrequited services of the weak and defenceless, could he ever bear to live a life of pampered indolence, secured to him by a hundred lives, each as precious and as sacred in the sight of heaven as his own, of unpaid toil and irredeemable debasement? Did genius pour out his heart as fervently Did genius pour out his heart as fervently to depict the calamities of war, as it has done to blazon forth what is called military glory? Would not children be led to abhor all unnecessary wars as much more than they abhor murder, as the destruction of an army is greater than that of a single murderer? If the schools were earnestly to teach children that office and honour are not synonymous terms, and that the only value of any office consists in its opening a wider sphere for useful exertion, should we find so many men renouncing usefulness and forfeiting honour for the acquisition of an office? If wealth were not forever talked of before children as among the chief prizes of life, should we see such throngs making haste to be rich, with all the attendant consequences of fraud and dishonour? Indeed so decisive is the effect of early training upon adult habits and character, that numbers of the most able and experienced teachers, those who have had the best opportunities to become acquainted with the errors and the excellences of children, their waywardness and their docility, have unanimously declared it to be their belief, that if all the children in the community, from the age of four years to that of sixteen, could be brought within the reformatory and elevating influences of good schools, the dark host of private vices and public crimes which now embitter domestic peace and stain the civilization of the age, might in ninety-nine cases of every hundred be banished from the world? When Christ taught his disciples to pray, Thy kingdom come, Thy will be done, on earth as it is done in heaven, did he teach them to pray for what shall never come to pass? And if this consummation is ever to be realized, is it to be by some mighty sudden instantaneous revolution effected by a miracle? Or is it to be produced gradually by that providence which uses human agents as its instruments? Were we to hear that some far-off land had been discovered, over which the tempest of war had never swept, where institutions of learning and religion were reverenced, and their ministers held in the foremost rank of honour, where falsehood, detraction, and perjury were never uttered, where neither intemperance nor the guilty knowledge how to prepare its means, nor the guilty agents to diffuse them were ever known, where all the obligations growing out of domestic relations were sacredly kept, where office always sought the wisest and best men for incumbents and never failed to find them, where witnesses were true and jurors just, for we can hardly conceive of a state of society upon earth so perfect as to exclude all differences of opinion about rights? In fine where all men were honest in their dealings and exemplary in their lives, with the exception of here and there an individual who from the rareness of his appearance would be regarded almost a monster, were we to hear of such a realm? Who, that loves peace and the happiness that comes from security and order, would not wish to escape from the turmoil and the violence, the ranker and the mean ambitions of our present sphere, and go there to dwell and to die? And yet it is the opinion of our most intelligent, dispassionate, and experienced teachers that we can, in the course of two or three generations, and through the instrumentality of good teachers and good schools, superinduce substantially such a state of society upon the present one, and this too without any miracle, without any extraordinary sacrifices or costly effort, but only by working our existing common school system with such a degree of vigour as we could easily put forth, and at such an expense as even the poorest community can easily bear. If the leaders of society, those whose law-giving eloquence determines what statutes shall be enacted by the legislature, or those who speak for the common heart in self-constituted assemblies, or those who shape popular opinion through the public press or in the private intercourse of life, if these are not yet prepared to have faith in the reformatory power of an early and wise training for the young, the fact only shows and measures the extent of the work which teachers and educationists have yet to perform. If men decline to cooperate with us because uninspired by our living faith, then the arguments, the labours, and the results which will create this faith are a preliminary step in our noble work. Is any high-minded, exemplary, and conscientious man disposed to believe that this substantial extirpation of social vices and crimes, according to the testimony of the witnesses above referred to, is a utopian idea, is more than we have any reason to expect while human nature remains as it is? Let me use the ad hominem argument to refute him. Let me refer him to himself, and ask him why the same influences which have saved him from gaming, intemperance, dissoluteness, falsehood, dishonesty, violence, and their kindred offences, and have made him a man of sobriety, frugality, and probity, why the same influences which have saved him from ruin might not, if brought to bear upon others, save them also? So far as human instrumentalities are concerned, we have abundant means for surrounding every child in the state with preservative and moral influences, as extensive and as efficient as those under which the present industrious worthy and virtuous members of the community were reared. And as to all those things in regard to which we are directly dependent upon the divine favour, have we not the promise, explicit and unconditional, that the men shall not depart from the way in which they should go if the children are trained up in it? It has been overlooked that this promise is not restricted to parents, but seems to be addressed indiscriminately to all, whether parents, communities, states, or mankind. End of Section forty-eight. Recording by Maria Casper. Section forty-nine of Annual Reports to the Massachusetts Board of Education by Horace Mann. This LibriVox recording is in the public domain. Twelfth Annual Report, eighteen forty-eight, Part Four. Religious Education. But it will be said that this grand result in practical morals is a consummation of blessedness that can never be attained without religion, and that no community will ever be religious without a religious education. Both of these propositions I regard as eternal and immutable truths. Devote of religious principles and religious affections, the race can never fall so low but that it may sink still lower. Animated and sanctified by them, it can never rise so high but that it may ascend still higher. And is it not at least as presumptuous to expect that mankind will attain to the knowledge of truth without being instructed in truth, and without that general expansion and development of faculties which will enable them to recognise and comprehend truth in any other department of human interest as in the department of religion? No creature of God of whom we have any knowledge has such a range of moral oscillation as a human being. He may despise privileges, and turn a deaf ear to warnings and instructions, such as evil spirits may never have known, and therefore be more guilty than they. Or ascending through temptation and conflict, along the radiant pathway of duty, he may reach the sublimest heights of happiness, and may there experience the joys of a contrast such as ever-perfect beings can never feel. And can it be that our nature in this respect is taken out of the law that governs it in every other respect? The law namely that the teachings which supply it with new views, and the training that leads it to acting conformity with those views, are ineffective and nugatory? Indeed the whole frame and constitution of the human soul show that if man be not a religious being, he is among the most deformed and monstrous of all possible existences. His propensities and passions need the fear of God as a restraint from evil, and his sentiments and affections need the love of God as a condition and preliminary to everything worthy of the name of happiness. Without a capability or susceptibility, therefore, of knowing and reverencing his maker and preserver, his whole nature is a contradiction and a solicism. It is a moral absurdity, as strictly so as a triangle with but two sides, or a circle without a circumference, is a mathematical absurdity. The man indeed of whatever denomination or kindred or tongue he may be, who believes that the human race, or any nation, or any individual in it, can attain to happiness or avoid misery, without religious principle and religious affections, must be ignorant of the capacities of the human soul, and of the highest attributes in the nature of man. We know from the very structure and functions of our physical organisation that all the delights of the appetites and of the grosser instincts are evanescent and perishing. All bodily pleasures, overindulged, become pains. Abstemiousness is the stern condition of prolonged enjoyment, a condition that balks desire at the very moment when it is most craving. Did the fields team, and the forests bend, and the streams flow with the most exquisite delicacies? How small the proportion of our time in which we could luxuriate in their sweets without satiety and disgust! Unchastened by temperance, the richest earthly banquets stimulate only to end in loathing. Perpetual self-restraint on the one side, or intolerable pains on the other, is the law of all our animal desires. And it may well be questioned which are the sharper sufferings, the fiercest pangs of hunger and of thirst, or the agonising diseases that form the fearful retinue of epicureanism and bacchanalian indulgence? Were the pleasures of the senses the only pleasures we could enjoy, immortality might well be scoffed at as worthless, and annihilation welcomed? For if another Eden were created around us, filled with all that could gratify the appetite or regale the sense, and were the whole range and command of its embowering shades and clustering fruits bestowed upon us? Still with our present natures we should feel intellectual longings, which not all the objects of sight and of sense could appease. The luxuries would sate the palate, and the beauties pall upon the eye, in the absence of objects to quicken and stimulate the sterner energies of the mind. The delights of the intellect are of a far nobler order than those of the senses. But even these have no power to fill up the capacities of an immortal mind. The strongest intellect tires; it cannot sustain an ever upward wing. Even in minds of Olympian vastness and vigour, there must be seasons for relaxation and repose, intervals when the wearied faculties, mounted upon the topmost of all their achievements, must stop in their ascending career to review the distance they have traversed, and to replenish their energies for an onward flight. And although in the far-off cycles of eternity the stature of the intellect should become as lofty as an archangel's, although its powers of comprehension should become so vast, and its intuitions so penetrating, that it could learn the history of a planet in a day, and master at a single lesson all the sciences that belong to a system of stars, still I repeat, that with our present nature we should be conscious of faculties unoccupied and restless, yea tormented with a sense of privation and loss, like lungs in a vacuum gasping vainly for breath, or like the eye in darkness straining to catch some glimmering of light. Without sympathy, without spiritual companionship with other beings, without some being all glorious in his perfections whom the spirit could commune with and adore, it would be a mourner and wanderer amid all the splendors of the universe. Through the lone realms of immensity would it fly, calling for love as a mother calls for her departed firstborn, but its voice would return to it, in echoes of mockery? Nay though the intellect of man should become as effulgent as the stars amid which he might walk, yet sympathetic and devout affections alone can fertilise the desolations of the heart. Love is as necessary to the human heart as knowledge is to the mind. An infinite knowledge can never supply the place of infinite good. The universe, grand, glorious, and beautiful as it is, can be truly enjoyed only through the worship as well as the knowledge of the great being that created it. Among people where there is no true knowledge of God, the errors, superstitions, and sufferings of a false religion always rush in to fill the vacuum. There is not a faculty nor a susceptibility in the nature of man, from the lightning-like intuitions that make him akin to the cherubim, or the fire and fervour of affection that assimilate him to seraphic beings, down to the lowest appetites and desires by which he holds brotherhood with beast and reptile and worm. There is not one of them all that will ever be governed by its proper law, or enjoy a full measure of the gratification it was adapted to feel, without a knowledge of the true God, without a sense of acting in harmony with his will, and without spontaneous effusions of gratitude for his goodness. Convictions and sentiments such as these can alone supply the vacuity in the soul of man, and fill with significance and loveliness what would otherwise be a blank and hollow universe. How limited and meager too would be the knowledge which should know all things else but still be ignorant of the self-existent author of all? What is the exquisite beauty of flowers, of foliage, or of plumage, if we know nothing of the great limner who has painted them and blended their colours with such marvellous skill? So the profundity of all science is shallowness if we know nothing of the eternal mind that projected all sciences, and made their laws so exact and harmonious that all the objects in an immensity can move onward throughout an eternity without deviation or error. Even the visible architecture of the heavens, majestic and refugant as it is, dwindles and glooms into littleness and darkness in the presence of the great builder who of old laid the foundation of the earth and meted out heaven with a span. Among all the objects of knowledge, the author of knowledge is infinitely the greatest, and the microscopic animalculae, which by a life of perseverance has circumnavigated a drop of water, or the tiny insect which has toiled and climbed until it has at last reached the highest peak of a grain of sand, knows proportionately more of the height and depth and compass of planetary spaces than the philosopher who has circuited all other knowledge but is still ignorant of God. In the acquisition of whatever art, or in the pursuit of whatever science, there is a painful sense of incompleteness and imperfection while we remain untaught in any great department known to belong to it. And so in the development and culture of the human soul, we are conscious not merely of the want of symmetry, but of gross disfigurement and mutilation, when the noblest and most enduring part of an appropriate development and culture is wanting. In merely an artistical point of view, to be presented with the torso of Hercules, or with the truncated body of Minerva, when we were expecting to behold the fullness of their majestic proportions, would be less painful and shocking than a system of human culture from which religious culture should be omitted. So too if the subject be viewed in relation to all the purer and loftier affections and susceptibilities of the human soul, the results are the same. If in surveying the highest states of perfection which the character of man has ever yet reached upon earth, we select from among the whole circle of our personal or historical acquaintances those who are adorned with the purest quality and the greatest number of excellences as the objects of our most joyful admiration and love, why should not the soul be lifted into sublimer ecstasies, and into raptures proportionately more exalted and enduring, if it could be raised to the contemplation of him whose name alone is excellent? If we delight in exhibitions of power, why should we pass heedlessly by the all-powerful? If human hearts are touched with deeds of mercy, there is one whose tender mercies are over all his works. If we reverence wisdom, there is such perfect wisdom on high that that of angels becomes folly in its presence. If we If we love the sentiment of love, has not the apostle told us that God is love? There are many endearing objects upon earth, from which the heart of man may be sundered; but he only is bereaved of all things who is bereaved of his Father in heaven. I here place the argument in favor of a religious education for the young upon the most broad and general grounds, purposely leaving it to every individual to add for himself those auxiliary arguments which may result from his own peculiar views of religious truth. But such is the force of the conviction to which my own mind is brought by these general considerations, that I could not avoid regarding the man who should oppose the religious education of the young as an insane man; and were it proposed to debate the question between us, I should desire to restore him to his reason before entering upon the discussion. If suddenly summoned to eternity, I were able to give but one parting word of advice to my own children, or to the children of others, if I were sinking beneath the wave, and had time to utter but one articulate breath, or were wasting away upon the death-bed, and had strength to make but one exhortation more, that dying legacy should be: "Remember thy Creator in the days of thy youth." I can then confess myself second to no one in the depth and sincerity of my convictions and desires, respecting the necessity and universality, both on abstract and on practical grounds, of a religious education for the young; and if I had stronger words at command in which to embody these views, I would not fail to use them. But the question still remains: how shall so momentous an object be pursued? In the measures we adopt to give a religious education to others, shall we ourselves abide by the dictates of religion? Or shall we do, as has almost universally been done ever since the unhallowed union between church and state under Constantine, shall we seek to educate the community religiously, through the use of the most irreligious means? On this subject I propose to speak with freedom and plainness, and more at length than I should feel required to do, but for the peculiar circumstances in which I have been placed. It is matter of notoriety that the views of the Board of Education, and my own, perhaps still more than those of the Board, on the subject of religious instruction in our public schools, have been subjected to animate version. Grave charges have been made against us, that our purpose was to exclude religion, and to exclude that too which is the common exponent of religion, the Bible, from the common schools of the state; or at least to derogate from its authority and destroy its influence in them. Whatever prevalence a suspicion of the truth of these imputations may have heretofore had, I have reason to believe that further inquiry and examination have done much to disabuse the too credulous recipients of so groundless a charge. Still, amongst a people so commendably sensitive on the subject of religion, as are the people of Massachusetts, any suspicion of irreligious tendencies will greatly prejudice any cause; and so far as any cause may otherwise have the power of doing good, will greatly impair that power. It is known too that our noble system of free schools for the whole people is strenuously opposed by a few persons in our own state, and by no inconsiderable numbers in some of the other states of this union; and that a rival system of parochial or sectarian schools is now urged upon the public by a numerous, powerful, and well-organized body of men. It has pleased the advocates of this rival system in various public addresses, in reports, and through periodicals devoted to their cause, to denounce our system as irreligious and anti-Christian. They do not trouble themselves to describe what our system is, but adopt a more summary way to forestall public opinion against it by using general epithets of reproach and signals of alarm. In this age of the world, it seems to me that no student of history or observer of mankind can be hostile to the precepts and doctrines of the Christian religion, or opposed to any institutions which expound and exemplify them; and no man who thinks, as I cannot but think, respecting the enduring elements of character, whether public or private, can be willing to have his name mentioned while he is living, or remembered when he is dead, as opposed to religious instruction and Bible instruction for the young. In making this final report therefore, I desire to vindicate my conduct from the charges that have been made against it, and so far as the Board has been implicated in these charges, to leave my testimony on record for their exculpation. Indeed, on this point the Board and myself must be justified or condemned together; for I do not believe they would have enabled me by their annual re-elections to carry forward any plan for excluding either the Bible or religious instruction from the schools; and had the Board required me to execute such a purpose, I certainly should have given them the earliest opportunity to appoint my successor. I desire also to vindicate the system with which I have been so long and so intimately connected, not only from the aspersion, but from the suspicion of being an irreligious or anti-Christian or un-Christian system. I know full well that it is unlike the systems which prevail in Great Britain and in many of the continental nations of Europe, where the established church controls the education of the young, in order to keep itself established; but this is presumptive evidence in its favor rather than against it. All the schemes ever devised by governments to secure the prevalence and permanence of religion among the people, however variant in form they may have been, are substantially resolvable into two systems. One of these systems holds the regulation and control of the religious belief of the people to be one of the functions of government, like the command of the army or navy, or the establishment of courts, or the collection of revenues. According to the other system, religious belief is a matter of individual and parental concern; and while the government furnishes all practicable facilities for the independent formation of that belief, it exercises no authority to prescribe, or coercion to enforce it. The former is the system which, with very few exceptions, has prevailed throughout Christendom for fifteen hundred years. Our own government is almost a solitary example among the nations of the earth, where freedom of opinion and the inviolability of conscience have been even theoretically recognized by the law. The argument in behalf of a government established religion, at the time when it was first used, was not without its plausibility; but the principle once admitted drew after it a train of the most appalling consequences. If religion is absolutely essential to the stability of the state, as well as to the present and future happiness of the subject, why, it was naturally asked, should not the government enforce it? And if government is to enforce religion, it follows as a necessary consequence that it must define it; for how can it enforce a duty which being undefined is uncertain? And again, if government begins to define religion, it must define what it is not as well as what it is; and while it upholds whatever is included in the definition, it must suppress and abolish whatever is excluded from it. The definition too must keep pace with speculation, and must take cognizance of all outward forms and observances; for if speculation is allowed to run riot, and ceremonies and observances to spring up unrestrained, religion will soon elude control, emerge into new forms, and exercise, if it does not arrogate, a substantial independence. Both in regard to matters of form and of substance, all recusancy must be subdued, either by the deprivation of civil rights or by positive inflictions; for the laws of man, not possessing like the laws of God a self-executing power, must be accompanied by some effective sanction, or they will not be obeyed. If a light penalty proves inadequate, a heavier one must follow: the loss of civil privileges by disenfranchisement, or of religious hopes by excommunication. If the non-conformist feels himself, by the aid of a higher power, to be secure against threats of future perdition, the civil magistrate has terrible resources at his command in this life: imprisonment, scourging, the rack, the faggot, death. Should it ever be said that these are excessive punishments for exercising freedom of thought, and for allowing the heart to pour forth those sentiments of adoration to God, with which it believes God himself has inspired it? The answer is always ready that nothing is so terrible as the heresy that draws after it the endless wrath of the omnipotent; and therefore that Smithfield fires, and inquisitorial tortures, and Otto de Faye's, and Saint Bartholomew's, are cheap offerings at the shrine of truth; nay, compared with the awful and endless consequences of a false faith, that they are of less moment than the slightest puncture of a nerve. And assuming the truth of the theory, and the right of the government to secure faith by force, it surely would be better, infinitely better, that every hilltop should be lighted with the fires of Smithfield, and every day in the calendar should be a Saint Bartholomew's, than that errors so fatal should go unabolished. In the council hall of the Inquisition at Avignon there still is, or lately was, to be seen, a picture of the Good Samaritan, painted upon the wall. The deed of mercy commemorated by this picture was supposed to be the appropriate emblem of the Inquisitor's work. The humanity of pouring oil and wine into the wounds of a bleeding wayfarer, who had fallen among thieves; the kindness of dismounting from his own beast and setting the half-dead victim of violence upon it; and the generosity of purchasing comfort and restoration for him at an inn, were held to be copied and imitated upon an ampler and nobler scale by the arrest of the heretic, by the violence that tore him from home and friends, and by the excruciating tortures that at last wrenched soul and body asunder. The priests who sentenced, and the familiars that turned the wheel or lighted the faggot, or with red-hot pincers tore the living flesh from the quivering limbs, were but imitators of the Good Samaritan, binding up moral wounds, and seeking to take a lost traveler to a place of recovery and eternal repose. So when the news of the massacre of Saint Bartholomew's, on which occasion thirty thousand men, women, and children were butchered at the stroke of a signal bell, reached Rome, the Pope and his cardinals ordained a thanksgiving, that all true believers might rejoice together at so glorious an event, and that God might be honored for the pious hearts that designed and the benevolent hands that executed, so Christian a deed. And admitting their premises, surely they were right. Could communities, or even individuals, be rescued from endless perdition, at the price of a massacre or an Otto de Faye? The men who would wield the sword or kindle the flame would be only nobler Samaritans; and the picture upon the Inquisition walls at Avignon would be but an inadequate emblem of their soul-saving beneficence. But in all the persecutions and oppressions ever committed in the name of religion, one point has been unwarrantably assumed, namely that the faith of their authors was certainly and infallibly the true faith. With the fewest exceptions, the advocates of all the myriad conflicting creeds that have ever been promulgated, have held substantially the same language: "Our faith we know to be true; for its truth we have the evidence of our reason and our conscience; we have the word of God in our hands, and we have the Spirit of God in our hearts, testifying to its truth." The answer to this claim is almost too obvious to be mentioned. The advocates of hundreds and thousands of hostile creeds have placed themselves upon the same ground. Each has claimed the same proof, from reason and from conscience, the same external revelation from God, and the same inward light of his Spirit. But if truth be one, and hence necessarily harmonious, if God be its author, and if the voice of God be not more dissonant than the tongues of Babel, then at least all but one of the different forms of faith ever promulgated by human authority, so far as these forms conflict with each other, cannot have emanated from the fountain of all truth. These faiths must have been more or less erroneous. The believers in them must have been more or less mistaken. Who, on an impartial survey of the whole, and a recollection of the confidence with which each one has been claimed to be infallibly true, shall dare to affirm that any one of them all is a perfect transcript of the perfect law, as it exists in the divine mind, and that that one is his? But here arises a practical distinction, which the world has lost sight of. It is this: After seeking all possible light, from within, from without, and from above, each man's belief is his own standard of truth; but it is not the standard for any other man. The believer is bound to live by his belief, under all circumstances, in the face of all perils, and at the cost of any sacrifice; but his standard of truth is the standard for himself alone, never for his neighbor. The neighbor must have his own standard, which to him must be supreme. And the fact that each man is bound to follow his own best light and guidance is an express negation of any other man's right, and of any government's right, of forcible interference. Here is the dividing line: On one side lie personal freedom and the recognition of freedom in others; on the other side are intolerance, oppression, and all the wrongs and woes of persecution for conscience's sake. The hierarchs of the world have generally reversed this rule of duty. They have been more rigid in demanding that others should live according to their faith, than in living in accordance with it themselves. Did the history of mankind show that there has been the most of virtue and piety in those nations where religion has been most rigorously enforced by law, and advocates of ecclesiastical domination would have a powerful argument in favor of their measures of coercion? But the united and universal voice of history, observation, and experience gives the argument to the other side. Nor is this surprising. Weak and fallible as human reason is, it is too much to expect that any mere man, even though aided by the light of a written revelation, would ever fathom the whole councils of the omnipotent and the eternal. But the limitations and shortsightedness of men's reason did not constitute the only obstacle to their discovery of truth. All the passions and perversities of human nature conspired to prevent so glorious an achievement. The easily acquired but awful power possessed by those who were acknowledged to be the chosen expounders of the divine will tempted men to set up a false claim to be the depositories of God's purposes towards men, and the selected medium of his communication with them; and to this temptation erring mortals were fain to yield. Those who were supposed able to determine the destiny of the soul in the next world came easily to control opinion, conduct, and fortune in this. Hence they established themselves as a third power, a power between the creature and the Creator, not to facilitate the direct communication between man and his maker, but to supersede it. They claimed to carry on the intercourse between heaven and earth, as merchants carry on commerce between distant nations, where the parties to the interchange never meet each other. The consequence soon was that this celestial commerce degenerated into the basest and most mercenary traffic. The favors of heaven were bought and sold like goods in the marketplace; robbery purchased pardon and impunity, by bribing the judge with a portion of the wealth it had plundered; the assassin bought permission to murder, and the incendiary to burn. A price current of crime was established, in which sins were so graduated as to meet the pecuniary ability of both rich and poor offenders. Licenses to violate the laws of God and men became luxuries, for which customers paid according to their several ability. Gold was the representative of all virtues as well as of all values. Under such a system, men lost their conscience, and women their virtue; for the right to commit all enormities was purchasable by money, and pardonable by grace, save only the guilt of heresy; and the worst of all heresies consisted in men's worshipping the god of their fathers according to the dictates of their- according to the dictates of their consciences. Those religious exercises which consist in a communion of the soul with its father in heaven have been beautifully compared to telegraphic communications between distant friends, where, silent as thought and swift as the lightning, each makes known to the other his joys and his desires, his affection and his fidelity, while the busy world around may know naught of their sacred communings. But as soon as hierarchies obtained control over men, they changed the channel of these communications between heaven and earth. An ecclesiastical bureau was established, and it was decreed that all the telegraphic wires should centre in that, so that all the communications between man and his maker should be subject to the inspection of its chiefs, and carried on through their agency alone. Thus whether the soul had gratitude or repentance to offer to its God, or light or forgiveness to receive from on high, the whole intercourse in both directions must go through the government office, and there be subject to take such form, to be added to or subtracted from, as the ministers and managers in possession of power might deem to be expedient. Considering the nature of man, one may well suppose that many of the most precious of the messages were never forwarded, that others were perverted, or forged ones put in their place, and that in some instances at least the reception of fees was the main inducement to keep the machinery in operation. Among the infinite errors and enormities resulting from systems of religion devised by man and enforced by the terrors of human government, have been those dreadful reactions which have abjured all religion, spurned its obligations, and voted the deity into non-existence. This extreme is, if possible, more fatal than that by which it was produced. Between these extremes, philanthropic and godly men have sought to find a medium which should avoid both the evils of ecclesiastical tyranny and the greater evils of atheism, and this medium has at length been supposed to be found. It is promulgated in the great principle that government should do all that it can to facilitate the acquisition of religious truth, but shall leave the decision of the question what religious truth is to the arbitrement without human appeal of each man's reason and conscience. In other words, that government shall never by the infliction of pains and penalties, or by the privation of rights or immunities, call such decisions either into prejudgment or into review. The formula in which the Constitution of Massachusetts expresses it is in these words: "All religious sects and denominations demeaning themselves peaceably and as good citizens shall be equally under the protection of the law, and no subordination of one sect or denomination to another shall ever be established by law." The great truth recognized and expressed in these few words of our Constitution is one which it has cost centuries of struggle and of suffering, and the shedding of rivers of blood to attain. And he who would relinquish or forfeit it virtually impetrates upon his fellow men other centuries of suffering and the shedding of other rivers of blood. Nor are we as yet entirely removed from all dangers of that relapse. The universal interference of government in matters of religion for so many centuries has hardened the public mind to its usurpations. Men have become tolerant of intolerance, and among many nations of Christendom the common idea of religious freedom is satisfied by an exemption from fine and imprisonment for religious belief. They have not yet reached the conception of equal privileges and franchises for all. Doubtless the time will come when any interference, either by positive infliction or by legal disability, with another man's conscience in religious concernments, so long as he molests no one by the exercise of his faith, will be regarded as the crowning and super-eminent act of guilt which one human being can perpetrate against another. But this time is far from having yet arrived, and nations otherwise equally enlightened are at very different distances from this moral goal. The oppressed, on succeeding to power, are prone to become oppressors in their turn, and to forget as victors the lessons which as victims they had learned. The colonial, provincial, and state history of Massachusetts shows by what slow degrees the rigor of our own laws was relaxed, as the day-star of religious freedom slowly arose after a long black midnight of the past. It was not indeed until a very recent period that all vestige of legal penalty or coercion was obliterated from our statute book, and all sects and denominations were placed upon a footing of absolute equality in the eye of the law. Until the ninth day of April eighteen twenty-one, no person in Massachusetts was eligible to the office of governor, lieutenant-governor, or councillor, or to that of senator or representative in the general court, unless he would make an oath to a belief in the particular form of religion adopted and sanctioned by the state. And until the eleventh day of November eighteen thirty-three, every citizen was taxable by the constitution and laws of the state for the support of the Protestant religion, whether he were a Protestant, a Catholic, or a believer in any other faith. Nor was it until the tenth day of March eighteen twenty-seven, Statute of eighteen twenty-six, Chapter one forty-three, Section seven, that it was made unlawful to use the common schools of the state as a means of proselytizing children to a belief in the doctrines of particular sects, whether their parents believed in those doctrines or not. All know the energetic tendency of men's minds to continue in a course to which long habit has accustomed them. The same law is as true in regard to institutions administered by bodies of men as in regard to individual minds. The doctrine of momentum or headway belongs to metaphysics as much as to mechanics. A statute may be enacted, and may even be executed by the courts, long before it is ratified and enforced by public opinion. Within the last few years, how many examples of this truth has the cause of temperance furnished? And such was the case in regard to the law of eighteen twenty-seven prohibiting sectarian instruction in our public schools. It was not easy for committees at once to withdraw or to exclude the books, nor for teachers to renounce the habits by which this kind of instruction had been given. Hence, more than ten years subsequent to the passage of that law, at the time when I made my first educational and official circuits over the state, I found books in the schools as strictly and exclusively doctrinal as any on the shelves of a theological library. I heard teachers giving oral instruction as strictly and purely doctrinal as any ever heard from the pulpit or from the professor's chair. And more than this, I have now in my possession printed directions given by committee-men to teachers, enjoining upon them the use of a catechism in school, which is wholly devoted to an exposition of the doctrines of one of the denominations amongst us. These directions bear date a dozen years subsequent to the prohibitory law above referred to. I purposely forbear to intimate what doctrine or what denomination was favoured in the language of the law by these means, because I desire to have this statement as impersonal as it can be. In the first place, then, I believed these proceedings not only to be wholly unwarranted by the law, but to be in plain contravention of law. And in the next place, the legislature had made it the express duty of the secretary diligently to apply himself to the object of collecting information of the condition of the public schools throughout the state, of the fulfilment of the duties of their office by all members of the school committees of all the towns, and the circumstances of the several school districts, in regard to all the subjects of teachers, pupils, books, apparatus, and methods of education, and so forth. I believed then, as now, that religious instruction in our schools, to the extent which the constitution and laws of the state allowed and prescribed, was indispensable to their highest welfare and essential to the vitality of moral education. Then as now also, I believed that sectarian books and sectarian instruction, if their encroachments were not resisted, would prove the overthrow of the schools. While on the one hand, therefore, I deplored, in language as earnest and solemn as I was capable of commanding, the insufficiency of moral and religious instruction given in the schools; on the other hand, instead of detailing what I believed to be the infractions of the law in regard to sectarian instruction, I endeavoured to set forth what was supposed to be the true meaning and intent of that law. Such a general statement of legal limitations and prohibitions, instead of a specific arraignment of teachers or of committees for disregarding them, I judged to be the milder and more eligible course. Less I could not do and discharge the duty which the law had expressly enjoined upon me; more I deemed it inadvisable to do, lest transgressors should take offence at what they might deem to be an unnecessary personal exposure. And further, I had confidence that when the law itself and the reasons of equity and public policy on which it was founded should be better understood, all violations of it would cease. Every word of my early reports having any reference to this subject was read in the presence of the board, on which sat able lawyers and distinguished clergymen of different denominations, and no word of exception was ever taken to the views there presented, either on the ground that they were contrary to the law, or had any sinister or objectionable tendency. No person, then, in the whole community could have been more surprised or grieved than myself at finding my views in regard to the extent and the limitation of religious instruction in our public schools attributed to a hostility to religion itself, or a hostility to the scriptures which are the lively oracles of the Christians' faith. As the board was implicated with me in these charges, they never having dissented from my views and continuing to re-elect me annually to the office of secretary, it is well-known to its earlier members that I urged the propriety of their meeting these charges with a public and explicit denial of their truth. In so grave a matter, I did not think that a refutation of the calumny would derogate from their dignity, but only evince the sensitiveness of their moral feelings and the firmness of their moral principles. Such was the course pursued by the Board of Commissioners of Education in Ireland, composed of some of the most pious and elevated dignitaries in both communions, and at whose head was that most able and venerable prelate Archbishop Whitley, when their conduct was assailed and their motives impugned because they refused to turn the national schools into engines for proselytizing from one sect to another, they met the charges from year to year in their annual reports, and finally discomfited and put to shame their bigoted assailants. To my suggestion in regard to vindicatory measures, the reply was that as the charges were groundless, they probably would be temporary, and that a formal reply to the accusations might bestow an undeserved importance upon the accusers. Were it not that the opinion of the board at that time did not coincide with my own, I should still think that an early, temperate, and decided refutation by the board itself of the charges against them, and against the system administered by them or under their auspices, would have been greatly preventive of evil and fruitful of good. The preoccupancy of the public mind with error on so important a subject is an unspeakable calamity, and errors that derive their support from religious views are among the most invincible. But different councils prevailed, and for several years in certain quarters suspicions continued rife. I was made to see and deeply to feel their disastrous and alienating influence as I travelled about the state, sometimes withdrawing the hand of needed assistance, and sometimes, when conduct extorted approval, impeaching the motives that prompted it. For no cause not dearer to me than life itself could I ever have persevered amid the trials and anxieties, and against the obstacles that beset my path. But I felt that there is a profound gratification in standing by a good cause in the hour of its adversity. I believed there must be a deeper pleasure in following truth to the scaffold than in shouting in the retinue where error triumphs. I felt too a religious confidence that truth would ultimately prevail. And that it was my duty to labour in the spirit of a genuine disciple, who toils on with equal diligence and alacrity, whether his cause is to be crowned with success in his own lifetime or only at the end of a thousand years. And as the complement of all other motives, I felt that a true education would be among the most efficient means to prevent the reappearance in another generation of such an aggressive and unscrupulous opposition as the board and myself were suffering under in this. After years of endurance, after suffering under misconstructions of conduct, and the imputation of motives whose edge is sharper than a knife, it was at my suggestion and by making use of materials which I had laboriously collected, that the board made its eighth annual report, a document said to be the ablest argument in favour of the use of the Bible in schools anywhere to be found. This report had my full concurrence. Since its appearance, I have always referred to it as explanatory of the views of the board, and as setting forth the law of a wise commonwealth and the policy of a Christian people. Officially and unofficially, publicly and privately, in theory and in practice, my course has always been in conformity with its doctrines, and I avail myself of this the last opportunity which I may ever have, to say in regard to all affirmations or intimations that I have ever attempted to exclude religious instruction from school, or to exclude the Bible from school, or to impair the force of that volume, that they are now and always have been without substance or semblance of truth. But it may still be said, and it is said, that however sincere or however religiously disposed the advocates of our school system may be, still the character of the system is not to be determined by the number or sincerity of its defenders, but by its own inherent attributes, and that if judged by these attributes, it is in fact and in truth an irreligious, un-Christian, and anti-Christian system. Having devoted the best part of my life to the promotion of this system, and believing it to be the only system which ought to prevail, or can permanently prevail, in any free country, I am not content to see it suffer unrelieved beneath the weight of imputations so grievous. Nor is it right that any hostile system should be built up by so gross a misrepresentation of ours. That our public schools are not theological seminaries is admitted; that they are debarred by law from inculcating the peculiar and distinct doctrines of any one religious denomination amongst us is claimed; and that they are also prohibited from ever teaching that what they do teach is the whole of religion, or all that is essential to religion or to salvation is equally certain. But our system earnestly inculcates all Christian morals; it founds its morals on the basis of religion; it welcomes the religion of the Bible, and in receiving the Bible it allows it to do what it is allowed to do in no other system, to speak for itself. But here it stops, not because it claims to have compassed all truth, but because it disclaims to act as an umpire between hostile religious opinions. The very terms "public school" and "common school" bear upon their face that they are schools which the children of the entire community may attend. Every man not on the pauper list is taxed for their support, but he is not taxed to support them as special religious institutions. If he were, it would satisfy at once the largest definition of a religious establishment. But he is taxed to support them as a preventive means against dishonesty, against fraud, and against violence, on the same principle that he is taxed to support criminal courts as a punitive means against the same offences. He is taxed to support schools on the same principle that he is taxed to support paupers, because a child without education is poorer and more wretched than a man without bread. He is taxed to support schools on the same principle that he would be taxed to defend the nation against a foreign invasion, or against raping committed by a foreign foe, because the general prevalence of ignorance, superstition, and vice will breed goth and vandal at home more fatal to the public well-being. will breed goth and vandal at home more fatal to the public well-being than any goth or vandal from abroad. And finally, he is taxed to support schools because they are the most effective means of developing and training those powers and faculties in a child by which, when he becomes a man, he may understand what his highest interests and his highest duties are, and may be, in fact and not in name only, a free agent. The elements of a political education are not bestowed upon any school-child for the purpose of making him vote with this or that political party when he becomes of age, but for the purpose of enabling him to choose for himself with which party he will vote. So the religious education which a child receives at school is not imparted to him for the purpose of making him join this or that denomination when he arrives at years of discretion, but for the purpose of enabling him to judge for himself, according to the dictates of his own reason and conscience, what his religious obligations are and whither they lead him. But if a man is taxed to support a school where religious doctrines are inculcated which he believes to be false and which he believes that God condemns, then he is excluded from the school by the divine law at the same time that he is compelled to support it by the human law. This is a double wrong. It is politically wrong, because if such a man educates his children at all, he must educate them elsewhere and thus pay two taxes, while some of his neighbours pay less than their due proportion of one. And it is religiously wrong, because he is constrained by human power to promote what he believes the divine power forbids. The principle involved in such a course is pregnant with all tyrannical consequences; it is broad enough to sustain any claim of ecclesiastical domination ever made in the darkest ages of the world. Every religious persecution since the time of Constantine may find its warrant in it and can be legitimately defended upon it. If a man's estate may be taken from him to pay for teaching a creed which he believes to be false, his children can be taken from him to be taught the same creed, and he too may be punished to any extent for not voluntarily surrendering both his estate and his offspring. If his children can be compulsorily taken and taught to believe a creed which the parent disbelieves, then the parent can be compulsorily taken and made to subscribe to the same creed. And in regard to the extent of the penalties which may be invoked to compel conformity, there is no stopping place between taking a penny and inflicting perdition. It is only necessary to call a man's reason and conscience and religious faith by the name of recusancy or contumacy or heresy, and so to inscribe them on the statute-book, and then the nonconformist or dissenter may be subdued by steel or cord or fire, by anathema and excommunication in this life, and the terrors of endless perdition in the next. Surely that system cannot be an irreligious, an anti-Christian, or an un-Christian one whose first and cardinal principle it is to recognise and protect the highest and dearest of all human interests and of all human rights. Again, it seems almost too clear for exposition that our system, in one of its most essential features, is not only not an irreligious one, but that it is more strictly religious than any other which has ever yet been adopted. Every intelligent man understands what is meant by the term jurisdiction. It is the rightful authority which one person or one body of men exercises over another person or persons. Every intelligent man understands that there are some things which are within the jurisdiction of government and other things which are not within it. As Americans, we understand that there is a line dividing the jurisdiction of the state governments from the jurisdiction of the federal government, and that it is a violation of the constitutions of both for either to invade the legitimate sphere of action which belongs to the other. We all understand that neither any state in this union nor the union itself has any right of interference between the British sovereign and a British subject or between the French government and a citizen of France. Let this doctrine be applied to the relations which our fellow citizens bear to the rulers who have authority over them. Primarily religious rights embrace the relations between the creature and the creator, just as political rights embrace the relations between subject and sovereign or between a free citizen and the government of his choice, and just as parental rights embrace the relation between parent and child. Rights, therefore, which are strictly religious, lie out of and beyond the jurisdiction of civil governments; they belong exclusively to the jurisdiction of the divine government. If then the state of Massachusetts has no right of forcible interference between an Englishman or a Frenchman and the English or French government, still less, far less, has it any right of forcible interference between the soul of man and the king and lord to whom that soul owes undivided and supreme allegiance. Civil society may exist, or it may cease to exist. Civil government may continue for centuries in the hands of the same dynasty, or it may change hands by revolution with every new moon. The man outcast and outlawed today, and to whom therefore we owe no obedience, may be rightfully installed in office tomorrow, and may then require submission to his legitimate authority. The civil governor may resign or be deposed; the framework of the government may be changed or its laws altered, so that the duty of allegiance to a temporal sovereign may have a succession of new objects or a succession of new definitions. But the relation of man to his maker never changes; its object and its obligations are immutable. The jurisdiction which God exercises over the religious obligations which his rational and accountable offspring owe to him excludes human jurisdiction. And hence it is that religious rights are inalienable rights. Hence also it is that it is an infinitely greater offence to invade the special and exclusive jurisdiction which the Creator claims over the consciences and hearts of men than it would be to invade the jurisdiction which any foreign nation rightfully possesses over its own subjects or citizens. The latter would be only an offence against international law; the former is treason against the majesty of heaven. The one violates secular and temporal rights only; the other violates sacred and eternal ones. When the British government passed its various statutes of premunière, as they were called, statutes to prevent the Roman pontiff from interfering between the British sovereign and the British subject, it was itself constantly enacting and enforcing laws which interfered between the sovereign of the universe and his subjects upon earth, far more directly and aggressively than any edict of the Roman sea ever interfered with any allegiance due from a British subject to the self-styled defender of the faith. It was in consequence of laws that invaded the direct and exclusive jurisdiction which our Father in Heaven exercises over his children upon earth, that the pilgrims fled from their native land to that which is the land of our nativity; they sought a residence so remote and so inaccessible in the hope that the prerogatives of the divine magistrate might no longer beset it naught by the usurpations of the civil power. Was it not an irreligious and an impious act on the part of the British government to pursue our ancestors with such cruel penalties and privations as to drive them into banishment? Was it not a religious and a pious act in the pilgrim fathers to seek a place of refuge where the arm of earthly power could neither restrain them from worshipping God in the manner which they believed to be most acceptable to Him, nor command their worship in a manner believed to be unacceptable? And if it was irreligious in the British government to violate freedom of conscience in the case of our forefathers two centuries ago, then it is more flagrantly irreligious to repeat that oppression in this more enlightened age of the world. If it was a religious act in our forefathers to escape from ecclesiastical tyranny, then it must be in the strictest conformity to religion for us to abstain from all religious oppression over others, and to oppose it wherever it is threatened. And this abstinence from religious oppression, this acknowledgement of the rights of others, this explicit recognition and avowal of the supreme and exclusive jurisdiction of heaven, and this denial of the right of any earthly power to encroach upon that jurisdiction, is precisely what the Massachusetts school system purports to do in theory and what it does actually in practice. Hence I infer that our system is not an irreligious one, but is in the strictest accordance with religion and its obligations. End of Section forty-nine. Recording by Maria Casper.
Section fifty of Annual Reports to the Massachusetts Board of Education by Horace Mann. This LibriVox recording is in the public domain. Twelfth Annual Report, eighteen forty-eight, Part Five. It is still easier to prove that the Massachusetts school system is not anti-Christian nor un-Christian. The Bible is the acknowledged expositor of Christianity. In strictness, Christianity has no other authoritative expounder. This Bible is in our common schools by common consent. Twelve years ago, it was not in all the schools. Contrary to the genius of our government, if not contrary to the express letter of the law, it had been used for sectarian purposes, to prove one sect to be right and others to be wrong. Hence it had been excluded from the schools of some towns by an express vote. But since the law and the reasons on which it was founded have been more fully explained and better understood, and since sectarian instruction has to a great extent ceased to be given, the Bible has been restored. I am not aware of the existence of a single town in the state in whose schools it is not now introduced, either by a direct vote of the school committee or by such general desire and acquiescence as supersede the necessity of a vote. In all my intercourse for twelve years, whether personal or by letter, with all the school officers in the state, and with tens of thousands of individuals in it, I have never heard an objection made to the use of the Bible in school, except in one or two instances; and in those cases the objection was put upon the ground that daily familiarity with the book in school would tend to impair a reverence for it. If the Bible, then, is the exponent of Christianity, if the Bible contains the communications, precepts, and doctrines which make up the religious system called and known as Christianity, if the Bible makes known those truths which, according to the faith of Christians, are able to make men wise unto salvation, and if this Bible is in the schools, how can it be said that Christianity is excluded from the schools? Or how can it be said that the school system which adopts and uses the Bible is an anti-Christian or an un-Christian system? If that which is the acknowledged exponent and basis of Christianity is in the schools, by what turgivalisation in language or paralogism in logic can Christianity be said to be shut out from the schools? If the Old Testament were in the schools, could a Jew complain that Judaism was excluded from them? If the Koran were read regularly and reverently in the schools, could a Mohammedan say that Mohammedanism was excluded? Or if the Mormon Bible were in the schools, could it be said that Mormonism was excluded from them? Is it not indeed too plain to require the formality of a syllogism that if any man's creed is to be found in the Bible and the Bible is in the schools, then that man's creed is in the schools? This seems even plainer than the proposition that two and two make four. That is, we can conceive of a creature so low down in the scale of intelligence that he could not see what sum would be produced by adding two and two together, who still could not fail to see that if a certain system called Christianity were contained in and inseparable from a certain book called the Bible, then wherever the Bible might go, there the system of Christianity must be. If a vase of purest alabaster, filled with myrrh and frankincense and precious ointments, were in the schools, would not their perfumes be there also? And would the beautiful vase and the sweet aroma of spice and unguent be any more truly there if some concocter of odours such as nature never made should insist upon saturating the air with the products of his own distillations, which, though pleasant to his idiosyncrasy, would be nauseous to everybody else? But if a man is conscious or suspicious that his creed is not in the Bible, but resolves that it shall be in the schools at any rate, then it is easy to see that he has a motive either to exclude the Bible from the school or to introduce some other book or some oral interpreter in company with it to misconstrue and override it. If the Bible is in the schools, we can see a reason why a Jew who disbelieves in the mission of our Saviour or a Mohammedan who believes in that of the Prophet should desire by oral instruction or catechism or otherwise to foist in his own views and thereby smother all conflicting views. But even they would not dare to say that the schools where the Bible was found were either anti-Christian or un-Christian; so far from this, if they were candid, they would acknowledge that the system of Christianity was in the schools and that they wished to neutralise and discard it by hostile means. And further, our law explicitly and solemnly enjoins it upon all teachers, without any exception, to exert their best endeavours to impress on the minds of children and youth committed to their care and instruction the principles of piety, justice, and a sacred regard to truth, love to their country, humanity, and universal benevolence, sobriety, industry and frugality, chastity, moderation, and temperance, and those other virtues which are the ornament of human society and the basis upon which a republican constitution is founded. Are not these virtues and graces part and parcel of Christianity? In other words, can there be Christianity without them? While these virtues and these duties towards God and man are inculcated in our schools, anyone who says that the schools are anti-Christian or un-Christian expressly affirms that his own system of Christianity does not embrace any one of this radiant catalogue, that it rejects them all, that it embraces their opposites. And further still, our system makes it the express duty of all the resident ministers of the gospel to bring all the children within the moral and Christian inculcations above enumerated, so that he who averes that our system is an anti-Christian or an un-Christian one averes that it is both anti-Christian and un-Christian for a minister of the gospel to promote or labour to diffuse the moral attributes and excellences which the statute so earnestly enjoins. So far, the argument has been of an affirmative character; its scope and purpose show, or at least tend to show, by direct proof that the school system of Massachusetts is not an anti-Christian nor an un-Christian system. But there is still another mode of proof. The truth of a proposition may be established by showing the falsity or absurdity of all conflicting propositions. So far as this method can be applied to moral questions, its aid may safely be invoked here. What are the other courses which the state of Massachusetts might adopt or sanction in relation to the education of its youth? There are these four. One, it might establish schools but expressly exclude all religious instruction from them, making them merely schools for secular instruction. Two, it might adopt a course directly the reverse of this; it might define and prescribe a system of religion for the schools and appoint teachers and officers whose duty it should be to carry out that system. Three, it might establish schools by law and empower each religious sect whenever and wherever it could get a majority, to determine what religious faith should be taught in them. And four, it might expressly disclaim and refuse all interference with the education of the young and abandon the whole work to the hazards of private enterprise or to parental will, ability, or caprice. As to one, a system of schools from which all religious instructions should be excluded might properly be called un-Christian, or rather non-Christian in the same sense in which it could be called non-Jewish or non-Mohammedan; which it could be called non-Jewish or non-Mohammedan, that is, as having no connection with either. I do not suppose a man can be found in Massachusetts who would declare such a system to be his first choice. Two, were the state to establish schools and prescribe a system of religion to be taught in them, and appoint the teachers and officers to superintend it, could there be any better definition or exemplification of an ecclesiastical establishment? Such a system would create at once the most formidable and terrible hierarchy ever established upon earth. It would plunge society back into the Dark Ages at one precipitation. The people would be compelled to worship the image which the government, like another Nebuchadnezzar, might set up, and for any refusal, the fiery furnace, seven times heated, would be their fate. And worse than this, the sacrodotal tyranny of the Dark Ages, and of more ancient as well as of more modern times, addressed its commands to men. Against men, it fulminated its anathemas; on men, its lightnings fell. But men had free agency. They could sometimes escape; they could always resist; they were capable of thought; they had powers of endurance; they could be upheld by a sense of duty here, and by visions of transcending rewards and glories hereafter. They could proclaim truth in the gaspings of death, on the scaffold, in the fire, in the interludes of the rack, and leave it as a legacy and a testimony to others. But children have no such resources to ward off tyranny or to endure its terrors. They are incapable of the same comprehensive survey of truth, of the same invincible resolve, of being inspired with an all-sustaining courage and endurance from the realities of another life. They would die under imprisonment, affrighted at the sight of the stake, or of any of the dread machinery of torture. They would surrender their souls to be distorted into any deformity or mutilated into any hideousness. Before the process of starvation had gone on for a day, they would swallow any belief, from atheism to thuggery. For any human government, then, to attempt to coerce and predetermine the religious opinions of children by law, and contrary to the will of their parents, is unspeakably more criminal than the usurpation of such control over the opinions of men. The latter is treason against truth, but the former is sacrilege. As the worst of all crimes against chastity are those which debauch the infant victim before she knows what chastity is, so the worst of all crimes against religious truth are those which forcibly close up the avenues and bar the doors that lead to the forum of reason and conscience. The spirit of ecclesiastical domination in modern times, finding that the principles of men are too strong for it, is attempting the seduction of children. Fearing the opinions that may be developed by mature reflection, it anticipates and forestalls those opinions, and seeks to imprint upon the ignorance and receptiveness of childhood the convictions which it could never fasten upon the minds of men in their maturity. As an instance of this, the factories bill, so-called, which in the year eighteen forty-three was submitted by Sir James Graham to the British Parliament, may be cited. Among other things, this bill provided that schools should be established in manufacturing districts, under the auspices of the nation and partly at its expense. These schools were to be placed under the immediate superintendence and visitation of officers appointed by the government. No teacher was to be eligible unless approved by a bishop or archbishop. Any parent who hired out his child to work in a factory for half a day, unless he should go to this sectarian or government school the other half of the day, was to be fined, and for non-payment of the fine, imprisonment was the legal consequence. So any overseer or factory proprietor who should employ a child for half a day, who did not attend school the other half, was also subject to a fine, and of course to imprisonment if the fine were not paid. It did not at all alter the principle that in a few accepted cases, owing to the peculiar nature of the work, the children were allowed to prosecute it for a whole day, or for two or three days in succession, because just so long as they were permitted to work, just so long were they required to go to the school after the work. Nor in the great majority of cases was it any mitigation of the plan, that if the parents would provide a separate school for their children at their own expense, they might send them to it, because not one in ten of the operatives had either the time or knowledge to found such a school, or pecuniary ability to pay its expenses if it were founded. The direct object and effect, therefore, of the proposed law were to compel children to attend the government school and be taught the government religion, under the penalty of starvation or the poorhouse. Children were debarred from a morsel of bread unless they took it saturated with the government theology. Now to the moral sentiments of every lover of truth, of every lover of freedom for the human soul, is there not a meanness, is there not an infamy in such a law, compared with which the bloody statutes of Elizabeth and Mary were magnanimous and honorable? To bring the awful forces of government to bear upon and to crush such lofty and indomitable souls as those of Latimer and Cranmer, of Ridley and Rogers, one would suppose to be diabolical enough to satisfy the worst spirits in the worst regions of the universe. But for a government to doom its children to starvation unless they will say it's catechism, and to imprison the parent and compel him to hear the wailings of his own famishing offspring, compel him to see them perish physically by starvation, or morally by ignorance, unless he will consent that they shall be taught such religious doctrines as he believes will be a peril and a destruction to their immortal souls, is it not the essence of all tyrannies, of all crimes, and of all baseness concreted into one? Such a system as this stands in the strongest possible contrast to the Massachusetts system. Will those who call our system un-Christian and anti-Christian adopt and practice this system as Christian and religious? Three, as a third method, the government might establish schools by law and empower each religious sect whenever and wherever it could get a majority, to determine what religious faith shall be taught in them. Under such a system, each sect would demand that its own faith should be inculcated in all the schools, and this on the clear and simple ground that such faith is the only true one. Each differing faith, believed in by all of the other sects, must of course be excluded from the schools, and this on the equally clear and simple ground that there can be but one true faith, and which that is has already been determined and is no longer an open question. Under such a system, it will not suffice to have the Bible in the schools speak for itself. Each sect will rise up, and virtually say, although the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation, is in the schools, yet its true meanings and doctrines are not there. Christianity is not there unless our commentary, our creed, and our catechism is there also. A revelation from God is not sufficient. Our commentary or our teacher must go with it to reveal what the revelation means. Our book or our teacher must be superadded to the Bible, as an appendix or an eratum is subjoined at the end of a volume, to supply oversights and deficiencies, and to rectify the errors of the text. It is not sufficient that the Holy Ghost has spoken by the mouth of David; it is not sufficient that God has spoken by the mouth of all His holy prophets, which have been since the world began; it is not sufficient that you have the words of one who spoke as never man spoke. All this leaves you in fatal ignorance and error unless you have our addenda and corregenda, our things to be supplied and things to be corrected. Nay, we affirm that without our interpretation and explanation of the faith which was once delivered unto the saints, all that the Holy Ghost and God and Christ have promulgated and taught to men still leaves your system an un-Christian and anti-Christian system. To accept a revelation directly from Jehovah is not enough. His revelation must pass through our hands; his infinite mind must be measured and squared by our minds. We have sat in council over his law, his promises, and his threatenings, and have decided definitively, unappealably, and forever, upon the only true interpretation of them all. Your schools may be like the noble Baryans, searching the scriptures daily, but unless the result of those searchings have our countersign and endorsement, those schools are un-Christian and anti-Christian. Now it is almost too obvious to be mentioned that such a claim as the above reduces society at once to this dilemma. If one religious sect is authorized to advance it for itself, then all other sects are equally authorized to do the same thing for themselves. The right being equal among all the sects, and each sect being equally certain and equally determined, what shall be done? Will not each sect, acting under religious impulses, which are the strongest impulses that ever animate the breast of man, will not each sect do its utmost to establish its supremacy in all the schools? Will not the heats and animosities engendered in families and among neighbors burst forth with a devouring fire in the primary or district school meetings? And when the inflammable materials of all the district meetings are gathered together in the town meeting, what can quell or quench the flames, till the zealots themselves are consumed in the conflagration they have kindled? Why would not all those machinations and oppressions be resorted to, in order to obtain the ascendancy, if religious proselytism should be legalized in the schools, which would be resorted to, as I have endeavored in a preceding part of this report to explain, if political proselytism were permitted in the schools? Suppose at last that different sects should obtain predominance in different schools, just as is done by different religions in the different nations in Europe, so that in one school, one system of doctrines should be taught to the children under the sanctions of law as eternal truth, and in the neighboring schools, other and opposite systems should also be taught as eternal truth. Under such circumstances, perhaps it is not too much to suppose, that although some of the weaker sects might be crushed out of existence at once, yet that all the leading denominations, with their divisions and subdivisions, would have their representative schools. Into these, their respective catechisms and articles of faith would be introduced. And though the Bible itself might accompany them, yet if we may judge from the history of all the religious struggles by which the world has been afflicted, the Bible would become the incident, and the catechism and articles the principal. And if these various catechisms or articles do declare, as is averred by each party, what the Bible means, and what the Christian religion is, then what a piebald, heterogeneous, and self-contradictory system does Christianity become? Suppose these schools to be brought nearer together, within hearing distance of each other, how discordant are the sounds they utter? Bring them under the same roof, remove partition or other architectural barrier, so that they may occupy the same apartment, so that the classes may sit side by side, and does the spectacle which they now exhibit illustrate the one indivisible, all-glorious system of Christianity, or is it a return of Babel? Would such a system as this be called Christian by those who denounce our system as anti-Christian? Is there not, on the contrary, an unspeakable value in the fact that, under the Massachusetts system, the Bible is allowed to speak for itself? Under a system opposite to ours, this right of speaking for itself would never be vouchsaved to it. And how narrow is the distance between those who would never allow the Bible to be read by the people at all, and those who will allow it to be read only in the presence of a government interpreter? If government and teachers really believe that the Bible is the word of God, as strictly and literally given by His inspiration, as the tables of the law which Moses brought down from the mount were written by his finger, then they cannot deny that when the Bible is read, God speaks just as literally and truly as an orator or a poet speaks when his oration or poem is rehearsed. With this belief, it is no figure of speech to say, when the lids of the Bible are opened in school, that its oracles may be uttered, that the lips of Jehovah are opened, that He may commune with all His children of whatever faith who may be there assembled. Is that a time and an occasion for a worm of the dust, a creature of yesterday, to rush in and close the book and silence the eternal one, that He may substitute some form of faith of His own, some form either received from tradition, or reasoned out or guessed by His fallible faculties, and impose it upon the children as the plainer and better word of God? Or when the allotted hour for religious instruction comes, or the desire arises in the teacher's mind that the children of the school should hold communion with their heavenly Father, suppose that the Father, instead of the medium of the Bible, should send an angel from His throne to make known to them His commands and His benedictions, by living lips and in celestial words? Would that be a time for the chiefs of twenty different sects to rush in with their twenty different catechisms, and thrust the heavenly messenger aside, and struggle to see which could out vociferate the rest in proclaiming what the visitant from on high was about to declare? I hold it, then, to be one of the excellences, one of the moral beauties of the Massachusetts system, that there is one place in the land where the children of all the different denominations are brought together for instruction, where the Bible is allowed to speak for itself, one place where the children can kneel at a common altar and feel that they have a common Father, and where the services of religion tend to create brothers and not Ishmaelites. If this be so, then it does violence to truth to call our system anti-Christian or un-Christian. Thus far, under this head, I have supposed that the different sects, in their contests for supremacy, would keep the peace. But every page in the history of polemic struggles shows such a supposition to be delusive. In the contests for victory, success would lead to haughtiness, and defeat to revenge. Affinities and repulsions would gather men into bodies; these bodies would become battalions, and would set themselves in hostile array against each other. Weakness of argument would reinforce itself by strength of arm, and the hostile parties would appeal from the tribunal of reason to the arbitrament of war. But after cities had been burned, and men slaughtered by thousands, and every diabolical passion in the human breast satiated, and the combatants were forced from mere exhaustion to rest upon their arms, it would be found, on a reexamination of the controverted grounds, that not a rule of interpretation had been altered, not the tense of a single verb in any disputed text had been changed, not a Hebrew point nor a Greek article had been added or taken away, but that every subject of dispute remained as unsettled and uncertain as before. Is any system which by the law of the human passions leads to such results, either Christian or religious? Four, one other system, if it may be so called, is supposable, and this exhausts the number of those which stand in direct conflict with ours. It is this: Government might expressly disclaim and refuse all interference with the education of the young, abandoning the whole work to the hazards of private enterprise, or to parental will, ability, or caprice. The first effect of this course would be the abandonment of a large portion of the children of every community to hopeless and inevitable ignorance. Even with all the aids, incitements, and bounties now bestowed upon education by the most enlightened states in this union, there exists a perilous and a growing body of ignorance animated by the soul of vice. Were government systems to be abolished, and all government aid to be withdrawn, the number of American children who in the next generation would be doomed to all the wants and woes that can come in the train of ignorance and error would be counted by millions. This abandoned portion of the community would be left without any of the restraints of education to work out the infinite possibilities of human depravity. In the more favored parts of the country, the rich might educate their own children, although it is well-known even now, that throughout the extensive regions of the South and West, the best education which wealth can procure is meager and stinted, and alloyed with much error. The parochial or sectarian system might affect something in populous places, but what could it do in rural districts, where so vast a proportion of all the inhabitants of this country reside? In speaking of the difficulties of establishing schools at the West, Miss Beecher gives an account of a single village which she found there. consisting of only four hundred inhabitants, where there were fourteen different denominations. Of the most numerous portions of these, she says, each was jealous lest another should start a church first and draw in the rest. The result was, neither church nor Sunday school of any kind was in existence. Of another place, she says, "I found two of the most influential citizens arrayed against each other and supported by contending partisans, so that whatever school one portion patronized, the other would oppose. The result was, no school could be raised large enough to support any teacher." And again, "In another large town, I was informed by one of the clergymen that no less than twenty different teachers opened schools and gave them up in about six months. In a population of four hundred, there would be about one hundred children who ought to attend school, although this proportion, on an average of the whole country, is nearly threefold the number of actual attendance. One hundred children would furnish the materials for a good school, but divided between fourteen different schools would give only seven children and one-seventh of a child to each school. How impossible to sustain schools on such a basis! The more numerous sects, it is true, would have a larger proportion, but just so much less would be the proportion of the smaller sects. And doubtless there would be some who would be fully represented by the above-mentioned fraction of one-seventh of a child." But let us take the case of Massachusetts, where the population has a density of five times the average of the other states in the Union, and let us see how insane and suicidal would be such a course of policy even with us. Leaving out all the cities, there are three hundred and five towns in Massachusetts, and these comprise most of the rural and sparsely populated portion of the state. These three hundred and five towns have an average of eleven schools, wanting a very small fraction, for each. Two hundred and twenty-six of these three hundred and five towns have a population, according to the last census, of less than twenty-two hundred each. If there are twenty-two hundred inhabitants and eleven schools in a town, each school represents an average of two hundred inhabitants. Including every child who was found in all our public schools last year, for any part either of the summer or winter terms, they would make a mean average for those terms of only forty-eight to a school. Now suppose those forty-eight scholars to be divided, not between fourteen but only between four different denominations, there would be but twelve to a school. Connect this result with the fact that Massachusetts has a population five times as dense as the average of the residue of the nation, and it will be seen by intuition that only in a few favored localities could a system of sectarian schools be maintained. This obstacle might be partially overcome by a union of two or more sects, between whom the repellency resulting from some punctilios in matters of form or ceremonial observance would not overcome the argument from availability. But this union, having been purchased by the sacrifice of a portion of what each holds to be absolute truth, why, when any one of the allies should become sufficiently powerful to stand alone, would it not dissolve the alliance, set up for itself, and abandon its Confederates to their fate? In making the above computation, which gives an average of forty-eight scholars to each school, it will be observed that all the schools in the state are included, the numerously attended schools of the cities, as well as the small ones of the country. And although the number of districts in the two hundred and twenty-six towns whose population is less than twenty-two hundred each may be somewhat less than in the remaining seventy-nine towns, yet the fact unquestionably is that an allowance of forty-eight scholars to a school is much too large an average for the schools in these two hundred and twenty-six of the three hundred and five towns of the state. Of course, twelve scholars to a school would be much too large an average if the schools were divided only between four different sects. Nor has any mention been made of the large numbers who connect themselves with no religious sect, and who, therefore, if united at all, would be united on the principle of opposition to sect. Surely the very statement of the case supersedes argument in regard to the possibility of maintaining schools for any considerable portion of the children of the country on such a basis. The calamities necessarily resulting from so partial and limited a system as the one now under consideration would inflict retributive loss and weakness upon all classes in the community, but upon the children of the poor, the ignorant, and the unfortunate would the blow fall with the most terrible severity. And what class of children ought we most assiduously to care for? Christ came to save that which would otherwise be lost. All good men and all governments, so far as they imitate the example of Christ, strive to succor the distressed and to reclaim the guilty, in an intellectual and in a moral sense, to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to visit the sick and the imprisoned, amid the priceless wealth of character, to find the lost piece of silver, and amid the wanderings from the fold of truth, to recover the lambs. Before heaven, it is now, today, the first duty of every government in Christendom to bring forward those unfortunate classes of people who in the march of civilization have been left in the rear. Though the van of society should still stand for a century, the rear ought to be brought up. The exterminating decree of Herod was parental and beneficent, compared with the cruel sway of those rulers who dig pitfalls of temptation along the pathway of children and suffer them to fall, unwarned and unassisted, into the abysses of ruin. What, then, shall be said of that opposition to our system, which, should it prevail, would doom to remedyless ignorance and vice a great majority of all the children in this land? Is such a system, as contradistinguished from our free system, Christian and religious? It is a very surprising fact, but one which is authenticated by a report made in the month of July last by a committee of the Boston primary schools, that of the ten thousand one hundred and sixty-two children belonging to said schools, five thousand one hundred and fifty-four were of foreign parentage. Let sectarianism be introduced into the Boston schools, or rather let it be understood that the schools are to be carried on for the avowed purpose of building up any one of the New England denominations, and what a vast proportion of these five thousand one hundred and fifty-four children would be immediately withdrawn from the schools. Their parents would as soon permit them to go to a Lazar house as to such schools, and this too from the sincerest of motives. The same thing would prove relatively true in regard to no inconsiderable numbers of the less populous cities and of the most populous towns in the state. Now what would be the condition of such children at the end of twenty years? And what the condition of the communities, which had thus cruelly closed the schoolhouse doors to them? Would not these communities be morally responsible for all the degradation, the miseries, the vices, and the crimes consequent upon such expulsion from the school? And would such a result be one of the fruits of a Christian and religious system? But there would be another inseparable accompaniment of such a system. In Massachusetts, the average compensation paid to male teachers is very much larger than that which is paid in any other state in the Union; it is nearly double what is given in most of the states. And yet even with us, the great body of ambitious and aspiring young men pass by the profession of teaching and betake themselves to some other employment known to be more lucrative, and falsely supposed to be more honorable. How degrading, then, must be the effect upon the general character and competency of teachers as a profession, when on the abolition of the public schools and the substitution of private and sectarian schools in their stead, the wages of teachers for the poorer classes shall be reduced to a pittance, and the collection of even this pittance shall be precarious. What will be the social rank and standing of teachers when their customary income encourages no previous preparation for their work, doles out only a niggardly subsistence even while they are engaged in the service, and leaves no surplus for the probable wants of sickness or the certain ones of age? And among whom shall the teacher seek his associates, when he is shunned by the learned for his want of culture, and ridiculed for his poverty by the devotees of wealth? Even in England, where the population is so dense that hardly a spot can be selected as a center, which will not embrace within a circumference of convenient distance a sufficient number of children for a school, even there, the voluntary and sectarian system leaves at least two-thirds of the agricultural and manufacturing classes in a state of the most deplorable ignorance, supplying them with teachers, so far as it supplies them with teachers at all, who fulfill the double office of perpetuating errors in school and degrading the character of the profession out of it. There is another fact of fearful significance which no one who has any regard for the common interests of society can be pardoned for forgetting: It is known to all that in many parts of the Union the population is so sparse, and can command so little of ready means for paying salaries, that no resident clergyman of any denomination is to be found throughout wide districts of the country, and many of those who do devote themselves to the spiritual welfare of their fellow men are most scantily provided for. If unmarried, they can barely live; if they have a family, there is oftentimes a real scantiness of the comforts and necessaries of life. They have neither books to peruse, nor leisure to read, even if they had books. They may be a pious, but they cannot be a learned clergy. At least in one respect, they are compelled to imitate Saint Paul, for as he wrought at his own craft for a subsistence, so must they. If existing means are too scanty to give a respectable support even to the ministry, how disastrous must be the effect of dividing these scanty means between the institution of the gospel and the institution of the school? Will not the vineyard of the Lord be overgrown with weeds? Will not its hedges be broken down and the wild beasts of the forest make their lair therein, if the servants, who are set to tend and to dress it, are so few in number and so miserably provided for? Is not this another criterion by which to determine whether our present system is not as Christian and as religious as that which would supplant it? I know of but one argument, having a semblance of plausibility, that can be urged against this feature of our system. It may be said that if questions of doctrinal religion are left to be decided by men for themselves or by parents for their children, numerous and grievous errors will be mingled with the instruction. Doubtless the fact is so. If truth be one, and if many contradictory dogmas are taught as truth, then it is mathematically certain that all the alleged truths but one is a falsity. But though the statement is correct, the inference which is drawn from it in favor of a government standard of faith is not legitimate. For all the religious errors which are believed in by the free mind of man, or which are taught by free parents to their children, are tolerable and covetable, compared with those which the patronage and seductions of government can suborn men to adopt, and which the terrors of government can compel them to perpetuate. The errors of free minds are so numerous and so various that they prevent any monster error from acquiring the ascendancy, and therefore truth has a chance to struggle forward amid the strife of the combatants. But if the monster error can usurp the throne of civil power, fortify itself by prescription, defend its infallibility with all the forces of the state, sanctify its enormities under sacred names, and plead the express command of God for all its atrocities, against such an antagonist, truth must struggle for centuries, bleed at every pore, be wounded in every vital part, and can triumph at last, only after thousands and tens of thousands of her holiest disciples shall have fallen in the conflict. If then a government would recognize and protect the rights of religious freedom, it must abstain from subjugating the capacities of its children to any legal standard of religious faith with as great fidelity as it abstains from controlling the opinions of men. It must meet the unquestionable fact that the old spirit of religious domination is adopting new measures to accomplish its work, measures which, if successful, will be as fatal to the liberties of mankind as those which were practiced in the bygone days of violence and terror. These new measures are aimed at children instead of men. They propose to supersede the necessity of subduing free thought in the mind of the adult by forestalling the development of any capacity of free thought in the mind of the child. They expect to find it easier to subdue the free agency of children by binding them in fetters of bigotry than to subdue the free agency of men by binding them in fetters of iron. For this purpose, some are attempting to deprive children of their right to labor, and of course of their daily bread, unless they will attend a government school and receive sectarian instruction. Some are attempting to withhold all means even of secular education from the poor, and thus punish them with ignorance, unless, with the secular knowledge which they desire, they will accept theological knowledge which they condemn. Others still are striving to break down all free public school systems where they exist, and to prevent their establishment where they do not exist, in the hope that on the downfall of these, their system will succeed. The sovereign antidote against these machinations is free schools for all, and the right of every parent to determine the religious education of his children. This topic invites far more extended exposition, but this must suffice. In bidding an official farewell to a system with which I have been so long connected, to which I have devoted my means, my strength, my health, twelve years of my time, and doubtless twice that number of years from what might otherwise have been my term of life, I have felt bound to submit these brief views in its defense. In justice to my own name and memory, in justice to the board of which I was originally a member, and from which I have always sought counsel and guidance, and in justice to thousands of the most wise, upright, and religious-minded men in Massachusetts who have been my fellow laborers in advancing the great cause of popular education under the auspices of this system, I have felt bound to vindicate it from the aspersions cast upon it and to show its consonance with the eternal principles of equity and justice. I have felt bound to show that, so far from being an irreligious, anti-Christian, or un-Christian system, it is a system which recognizes religious obligations in their fullest extent, that it is a system which invokes a religious spirit, and can never be fitly administered without such a spirit, that it inculcates the great commands upon which hang all the law and the prophets, that it welcomes the Bible, and therefore welcomes all the doctrines which the Bible really contains, and that it listens to these doctrines so reverently that for the time being it will not suffer any rash mortal to thrust in his interpolations of their meaning, or to overlay the text with any of the many inventions which the heart of man has sought out. It is a system, however, which leaves open all other means of instruction, the pulpit, the Sunday schools, the Bible classes, the catechisms of all the denominations, to be employed according to the preferences of individual parents. It is a system which restrains itself from teaching that what it does teach is all that needs to be taught, or that should be taught, but leaves this to be decided by each man for himself, according to the light of his reason and conscience, and on the responsibility of that great being who, in holding him to an account for the things done in the body, will hold him to the strictest account for the manner in which he has trained up his children. Such, then, in a religious point of view, is the Massachusetts system of common schools. Reverently it recognizes and affirms the sovereign rights of the Creator; sedulously and sacredly it guards the religious rights of the creature, while it seeks to remove all hindrances and to supply all furtherances to a filial and paternal communion between man and his maker. In a social and political sense, it is a free school system. It knows no distinction between rich and poor, of bond and free, or between those who, in the imperfect light of this world, are seeking through different avenues to reach the gate of heaven. Without money and without price it throws open its doors, Without money and without price it throws open its doors and spreads the table of its bounty for all the children of the state. Like the sun, it shines not only upon the good but upon the evil that they might become good, and like the rain, its blessings descend not only upon the just but upon the unjust, that their injustice may depart from them and be known no more. To the great founders of this system we look back with filial reverence and love. Amid the barrenness of their land and in utter destitution of wealth, they coined the rude comforts and even the necessaries of life into means for its generous support. Though as laborers by day they subdued the wilderness, and as sentinels by night they guarded the camp, yet they found time for the vigilant administration and oversight of the schools in the day of their infancy and weakness. But for this single institution, into which they transfused so much of their means and of their strength, and of which they have made us the inheritors, how different would our lot and our life have been? Upon us its accumulated blessings have descended. It has saved us from innumerable pains and perils that would otherwise have been our fate, from the physical wretchedness that is impotent to work out its own relief, from the darkness of the intellect whose wanderings after light so often plunge it into deeper gloom, and from the moral debasement whose pleasures are vices and crimes. It has surrounded us with a profusion of comforts and blessings, of which the most poetic imagination would never otherwise have conceived. It has found not mythologic goddesses, but gigantic and tireless laborers in every stream, not evil and vindictive spirits, but beneficent and helping ones in all the elements, and by a profounder alchemy than schoolmen ever dreamed of, it transmutes quarries and icefields into gold. It has given cunning to the hand of the mechanic, keenness to the artisan's eye, and made a sterile soil grow grateful beneath the skill of the husbandman, hence the absence of poverty among our native population, hence a competency for the whole people, the means for mental and moral improvement, and for giving embellishment and dignity to life such as the world has never known before and such as nowhere else can be found upon the face of the earth. How divinely wise were our pilgrim fathers when they foresaw that if they could give knowledge and virtue to their children they gave them all things! Wonder and admiration seize us as we reflect upon the vastness of the results which their wisdom wrought out from the scantiest of resources. They have taught us the great lesson, how the fiercest elements obey, and how the most obdurate and intractable of nature's substances bend and melt before the power of knowledge and the fervors of a saintly heroism. Their deeds have taught us not only that the race is not to the swift, nor the battle to the strong, but they have taught us that the swiftness which shall win the honors of the goal and the strength that shall triumph in the strife are to be found in the soul, not in the limbs of man. But though to this untitled yet noblest ancestry we are bound to pay the homage of our gratitude and to accept their benefactions with a filial love, yet neither the complacency of enjoyment nor that of retrospection is the frame of mind that best befits us. We have our futurity, as they had theirs, a futurity rapidly hastening upon us, a futurity now fluid, ready as clay in the hands of the potter, to be molded into every form of beauty and excellence. But so soon as it reaches our hands, so soon as it receives the impress of our plastic touch, whether this touch be for good or for evil, it is to be struck into the adamant of the unchanging and unchangeable past. Into whose form and likeness shall we fashion this flowing futurity? Of Mammon? Of Moloch? Or of Jesus? Clear and more clear out of the dimness of coming time emerge to the vision of faith the myriad hosts of the generations that shall succeed us. These generations are to stand in our places, to be called by our names, and to accept the heritage of joy or of woe which we shall bequeath them. Shall they look back upon us with veneration for our wisdom and beneficent forecast, or with shame at our selfishness and degeneracy? Our ancestors were noble examples to us. Shall we be ignoble examples to our posterity? They gave from their penury. Shall we withhold from our abundance? Let us not dishonor our lineage. Let us remember that generosity is not to be measured by the largeness of the sum which a man may give, but by the smallness of the sum which remains to him after his gift. Let us remember that the fortunes of our children and of their descendants hang upon our fidelity, just as our fortunes were suspended upon the fidelity of our fathers. Deeds survive the doers. In the highest and most philosophic sense, the asserted brevity of human life is a fiction; the act remains, though the hand that wrought it may have perished. And when our spirits shall have gone to their account, and the dust of our bodies shall be blown about by the wind or mingled with the waves, the force which our life shall have impressed upon the machinery of things will continue its momentum and work out its destiny upon the character and happiness of our descendants. But not the fortunes of our children alone or of our children's children are dependent upon us. The influences of our conduct extend outward in space as well as onward in time. We are part of a mighty nation which has just embarked upon the grandest experiment ever yet attempted upon earth, the experiment of the capacity of mankind for the wise and righteous government of themselves. Fearful are the issues which hang upon the trial, but few and simple the conditions that predestine its result. The firmament, though pillared upon rottenness, shall be upheld, and the light of day shall continue to revisit the earth though the sun be blotted out, sooner than that a republic shall stand which has not knowledge and virtue for its foundations. Yet are we not braving the results of this experiment, in impious defiance of the conditions on which heaven has decreed the trial shall turn? Within a brief period of time, our population has spread itself westward from the Atlantic, through more than twenty degrees of longitude; it has erected thirty states and given to each a republican frame of government. Yet in more than one-half of these states, no provision worthy of the name is made for replenishing the common mind with knowledge or for training the common heart to virtue. Surely to the people of these states a different mental and moral culture must come speedily, or it will come too late, and the sower who would scatter the elements of knowledge and virtue amongst them must press forward with gigantic strides and cast his seed with a gigantic arm. Nor is this all. Beyond our western frontier, another and wider realm spreads out, as yet unorganized into governments and uninhabited by civilized man. The western is still broader than the eastern expanse; it stretches through thirty degrees of longitude, one-twelfth part of the circumference of the globe. Half the population of continental Europe might be transplanted to it, find subsistence on it, and leave room to spare. It is now a waste more dreary than desolation itself, for it is filled only with savage life. Yet soon will every root of its surface be explored by the centrifugal force of the Saxon soul, and whatever of vegetable wealth is spread upon it or of mineral wealth is garnered beneath it will be appropriated by the vehemence of Saxon enterprise. Shall this new empire, wider than that of the Ptolemies and almost as extensive as that of the Caesars, be reclaimed to humanity, to a Christian life and a Christian history? Or shall it be a receptacle where the avarice, the profligacy, and the licentiousness of a corrupt civilization shall cast its criminals and breed its monsters? If it is ever to be saved from such a perdition, the mother-states of this Union, those states where the institutions of learning and religion are now honored and cherished, must send out their hallowing influences to redeem it. And if, in the benign and providence of God, the tree of paradise is ever to be planted and to flourish in this new realm, if its branches are to spread and its leaves to be scattered for the healing of the people, will not the heart of every true son of Massachusetts palpitate with desire, not a low and vainglorious ambition, but such a high and holy aspiration as angels might feel, that her name may be engraved upon its youthful trunk, there to deepen and expand with its immortal growth? End of Section Fifty. End of Annual Reports to the Massachusetts Board of Education by Horace Mann. Recording by Maria Casper.